Ladies and gentlemen, can you take your seat, please?
A month later, she was standing in line, she was supposed to already sign. They filled out their names and hers, and they booked her name on the scanner.
Okay. Sorry ma'am.
Well, how about if I paint her out and you see her come up?
No, I'm sorry ma'am, I can't do that.
Are you kidding me?
No, I'm not kidding you ma'am, I'm sorry, I'm trying to do my job here, I have to announce this speaker first, so I apologize, I'm sorry.
Okay, I think we are ready to get started, I'm gonna first, if I could have everybody's attention please, I'm gonna first ask the interpreter to introduce yourself and show where you're going to be, in English and Spanish please.
Good morning, this is Gabriela Contreras, I am the Spanish interpreter for today. Hola muy buenos dias, mi nombre es Gabriela Contreras, voy a ser su intérprete del dia de hoy.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Eric Cruz, ser el intérprete español para el dia de hoy. Good morning, my name is Eric Cruz, I'll be a Spanish interpreter for today, I'll be standing in the back left part of the room.
Okay, and if everybody would stand and cite the Pledge of Allegiance with me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I will turn it over to Commissioner Neal.
I now call to order the public hearing. We are here in Tucson, we'll also streaming the meetings online via WebEx, and you'll be posted online afterwards via YouTube. I want to welcome everybody today, I know we have an incredible amount of interest and attention, and we really are thankful for that. This is the forty-second public meeting, and the final public meeting prior to us doing the final map drawing starting Monday morning. Including satellite locations, we've had sixty-four locations for public meetings. The input has been terrific, and we are thankful. Today, we have such a large crowd, that we are gonna be reducing the time per speaker to a minute and a half from two minutes. And so we really ask you to think about what you're gonna say, and get your key point ready, and we don't need a lot of hello-thank-yous, and you can just come up and state the important things that you wanna, that you'd wanna get across to us. But we will, we need to do that in order to have, have time to get as many speakers as we can. If you'd like to make a public comment, you may do so by signing in with the staff and filling out the public comment card. Even though this meeting began at ten AM, anyone can attend and submit a public speaker card at any time, and we'll stay until the last speaker is heard. There's an American Sign Language interpreter and a transcriptionist who'll be just transcribing every meeting, so please speak slowly and clearly, so we have a clear record of your input. And at this time, we will introduce ourselves. I am David Neal, I'm a Republican Commissioner, live in Pima County, live in Tucson, and I am very, very pleased to be here today.
Hello, my name is Erica Newberg, I am the independent chairwoman, and I live in Chandler.
Good morning, Yatay, I'm Derek Hotzman, the Vice Chairman of the Commission, and I'm the Democratic appointee from Apache County. Good morning, thank you.
And Commissioner Lerner?
Good morning, everybody, I'm here in Maryvale with a great group of people, my name is Shereen Lerner, I'm one of the Commissioners from Maricopa County. Glad to be here.
And now we'll move to Agenda Two, and staff will read the rules of the meeting.
Thank you Commissioner Neal. Citizens may only speak when recognized by the Chair or Presiding Officer of the meeting if the Chair is absent or has otherwise delegated Hearing Administration authority. In compliance with Arizona's open meeting law, speakers should confine their statements to the issue on the posted agenda which is before the Commission. Speakers are also requested to limit their comments to approximately one minute and thirty seconds. In an effort to allow for as many speakers as possible, the Commission may adjust the time limits depending on the amount of speakers requesting to be heard. Additionally, speakers are required to follow proper decorum. Speakers must use appropriate language, foul and/or abusive language will not be tolerated. Any speaker failing to follow proper decorum or any other guidelines may be asked to leave. Any breach of the peace or disruption of a Commission public hearing may be the cause of report to law enforcement. If someone has already expressed the same sentiment you wish to express, you may say so and your comments will be recorded. If you have already expressed your thoughts at a previous meeting, you do not need to speak again, your comments were recorded in the public record. We also ask if you've already spoken, if you could leave the room so we can allow for more people in. This is a nonpartisan meeting, please do not distribute political material in the meeting room. Opposing viewpoints may be expressed by the citizens present. As a courtesy, citizens are reminded to address their comments to the Chair and the Commission, and not to the audience present. Please show respect for the speakers and avoid personal comments. Remember, the Commission must hear all sides of an issue in order to make an informed decision. At this time, we will go ahead and move forward with public comment.
Madam Chair, and Commissioners, and listening audience, I am gonna read the names of the first ten speakers, and you will line up behind me accordingly. I will only read your name once, so please listen. Anna Clark. John Maynard. Allison Jones. Michael Gettis. Mary Kearns. Peyton Davis. William Cleveland. Susan Bickel. James McFarin, McFarzen. McFesian. Nicole Barasa.
Thank you, good morning, Commission, appreciate you taking the time to listen to us today. My name is Anna Clark, I'm a resident of Oro Valley, and as a very active and longtime member of Oro Valley, today I would like to voice my support for Southern Arizona portion of LD Map ten point O. LD seventeen specifically combines Saddlebrook, Saddlebrook Ranch, Morana, Oro Valley, the Tancaverty Valley, and the Houghton Corridor into one district. Residents of Saddlebrook and Saddlebrook Ranch are part of our community. Specifically, Saddlebrook and Saddlebrook Ranch have more in common with us in Oro Valley and Morana than we, they do in Northern Pinal and Navajo County. They shop here in Oro Valley, get their medical treatment here, go to church here, our friends and family, we all live here. Just like Morana and the community of Tancaverty Valley live in a, live a rural lifestyle, as does the Cor, excuse me, Houghton Corridor. As residents of these communities, we have actively chosen not to live in the city of Tucson and have nothing in common with these urban areas. Unincorporated Pima County and the smaller surrounding towns need a check and a balance on the city of Tucson. LD seventeen provides that. Finally, LD seventeen gives Republicans in Southern Arizona a voice. In contrast, LD Map nine point O creates an all Democrat map, silencing that voice. I strongly support Map ten point O, and urge you to adopt it as a final map. Morana, Oro Valley, Saddlebrook, Saddlebrook Ranch, and the Tancaverty Valley, and the Horton Corridor belong together and need to stay together. And please note that all those that are standing behind me have chosen to support my letter instead of take our time to speak. Thank you again very much for your time today.
Good morning, Chair Newberg and Commissioners, my name is John Maynard, I live in Oro Valley. I come before you to speak today on behalf of myself, and those that are standing now have read my comments and concur with those, plus forty-six others that couldn't be here today. We strongly urge you to adopt Map ten point O, and in particular Legislative District Seventeen is drawn. This is where we live, where most of us worship, shop, dine out, and go to movies, it's where our children and grandchildren attend excellent public and private schools. LD seventeen defines an extraordinarily strong community of interest for us by linking Red Rock, Morana, Oro Valley, Catalina, Eagle Crest Ranch, Saddlebrook, Saddlebrook Ranch, the Tancaverty Valley, the Houghton Corridor, and Vale. We share and greatly value similar lifestyles. Like Morana, the residents of Tancaverty Valley, the Houghton Corridor enjoy a rural lifestyle where horses are allowed on street, on the larger streets. The locals have chosen to live there rather than in midtown Tucson, where they have nothing in common with the urban areas. You have repeatedly heard from my friends on the left, calling for competitive districts. On that point, we strongly agree. The LD ten is not competitive by incorporating two-thirds of it into LD eleven, who once again create a competitive district for the residents of Tancaverty Valley, the Houghton Corridor, and Vale. Unincorporated Pima County and smaller towns need a check and balance against the city of Tucson. Finally, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Good morning, Commission, my name is Allison Jones, I live in Tucson. As we near the end of this redistricting exercise, troubling information has come to light that District Seventeen, a sprawling, non-compact district that wraps around Tucson, was actually drawn by Senator Vince Leach and the GOP. It was passed through the Southern Area Leadership Council to this Commission in an attempt to impart a veneer of legitimacy. If every map that was submitted to this Commission was treated equally, perhaps that would be less troubling. But the District Seventeen map was put on a fast track to approval. Independent redistricting exists to prevent legislators from drawing their own districts. Senator Leach and his accomplices have made a mockery of this process. Now that this Commission knows this, you can fix it. How one district is drawn has a ripple effect, and District Seventeen has troubling ripple effects. The one that concerns me most, Santa Cruz County, a county of only fifty thousand is being split apart. This county is a true community of interest. I implore you to acknowledge Santa Cruz County and reject Seventeen. Cronyism, backroom deals, and the stench of unconstitutional partisan gerrymandering of LD Seventeen has contaminated the whole map and will be a shameful legacy of this Commission if it is passed, thank you.
We would ask, please do, to avoid applause and avoid any response, so thank you.
Please proceed.
My name's Michael Geddes, thank you very much for what you're doing, it's a hard job, I'm proud, I'm, to say I'm from the state of Arizona, it's one of the least gerrymandered states in the country. But since pre-clearance was pulled from the Voters Right Act, you get the last say, in January, the districts you draw, that's it. If the stay is, is not overturned, so we have to live with that, so keep Arizona competitive, right? I mean, think of the wisdom of forcing communities of interest to pull together for a common cause. We all tend to go to our own corners, right? And so we've come up with like some number, two hundred eighty-seven thousand, and it's gotta be contiguous and compact, or otherwise it's just political. At the TCC, I spoke about counties as strong communities of interest. You know, some people think that white Christians is a community of interest. It's not, it's the dominant culture, and communities of interest are created primarily to give voice against the majority, right? And so if you, if you keep them continuous, they get that voice, you know? You'll hear some people say that where they eat and get their nails done and have dinners are communities of interest, they are just not, right? It's your tough job to make things fair. Great job so far, but gerrymandering District Seventeen is causing you to split Santa Cruz apart, right? You're just struggling with it, you can't wrap your head around it. I support Map nine oh two, everything Allison Jones just said, I mean, counties are obvious communities of interest, they're already assembled around a tax and spend structure, they're compact by nature and they're contiguous. All I'm asking for is, don't split up the county.
Hello, my name is Mary Kearns, I moved to Arizona in nineteen eighty-five, and I spent twenty-three years as a successful employee benefits insurance consultant. I'm a businesswoman. I retired and now live in the Catalina foothills near Sabino Canyon. I'm here to object to draft Map Ten of the LD Nine Seventeen District. This district does not meet the IRC criteria in several ways. It is not compact and contiguous, it does not represent communities of interest being kept together, and it is clearly not competitive according to your own mapping specialist reports. All three of these are specific requirements for the IRC. At the last meeting in October, it was specifically stated that this map was drawn to create another Republican district in Pima County. This is unconstitutional, a political party is not a community of interest. This draft map goes against the IRC regulations and should not be permitted. I urge the entire Commission to return to LD Test Map version nine point O as proposed by Commissioner Lerner. Make LD Seventeen a compact district that recognize real communities of interest and make it a competitive district. These are the tenants of the IRC regulation, thank you.
Hello, my name is Peyton Davies, and I live in Oro Valley. I have friends that I play golf with in Saddlebrook and Saddlebrook Ranch. I lead a Parkinson's support group that has people from Picture Rock. I have bookkeepers down in Tancaverty. So, to me, it is not so terribly gerrymandered. As far as the two, the Congressional Map Six that you have shown approved, and the Seventeen, I'd like to approve of them both, except for minor changes, I'd like to add Picture Rock to both of them. For District CD Six and LD Eleven, excuse me, Seventeen. And I would like to remove that little appendage on CD, on LD Seventeen, the little appendage at the bottom right side of the page. Thank you.
I want to thank William Cleveland for allowing us to have the council member, councilwoman from the Thanatam Nation, Hermenia Frias, if she can come up and speak.
Good morning, Gilson Chanavoa, actually, correction, it's Pasco Yaki Tribe. Thank you, my name is, thank you, excuse me, Michelle, and Chairwoman Newberg, and the Commissioners for the opportunity to speak today. My name's Hermenia Frias, and I'm Councilwoman for Pasco Yaki Tribe. Excuse me, the tribe submitted a letter and a legislative map for your review, and I wanted to highlight a few of the points that are in the letter. Our reserve, our tribe is different from some of the tribes that are in Arizona. We have a, I wasn't prepared to speak right away, so I'm a little bit catching my breath, because I was like, kinda rushing. But our tribe is, is, we have a reservation here in Tucson, but we have communities located all throughout Arizona. And our communities are located in Pima, Pinal, and Maricopa. And the communities are in Barrio Libre, Ol Pascua, in Juan Pablo Morana, Eloy Coolidge, Pima County, and Pinal County. We have three tribally recognized communities in Maricopa County, including Guanajuape, Benhamo, Scottsdale, High Town, and Chandler. What is critical to know about our tribal members in each community, and these communities, that they're represented by our council, and we govern these as a single sovereign. Okay, we submitted our letter and our map for your review and for your consideration.
Please let us deal with the timing, thank you.
Hello, my name's William Cleveland, and I live in the Picture Rocks community northwest of Tucson, and currently reside in LD Eleven. I strongly support the Southern Arizona portion of draft map ten point O that relates to LD Seventeen. It combines Saddlebrook, Saddlebrook Ranch, Morana, Oro Valley, the Tancaverty Valley, and Houghton Corridor. The only issue that I have with it is that my community of Picture Rocks is not included in it. Although Picture Rocks is technically considered unincorporated Tucson, our community has more in common with Morana and Oro Valley than any locality on the current draft map that we are included with in LD Sixteen, such as Pinal and Maricopa, or even any of the other draft locations related to the city of Tucson. Members of the Picture Rocks community move to unincorporated areas of Pima County, because we do not like the issues with the crime, traffic, and ideology of the city of Tucson. Our fire district is Picture Rocks, and our law enforcement comes from Pima County. Our children are in the Morana School District, our shopping and dining are in Morana, and our nearest medical and hospital facilities are located in Morana and Oro Valley. Unincorporated Pima County, particularly the Picture Rocks community, needs a check and balance of the city of Tucson. LD Seventeen provides that, and Picture Rocks should be included with that. Thank you very much for your time.
And I'll just make an announcement, if, when you come up to the microphone, feel free to adjust it to your height, okay?
Thanks. My name is Susan Bickel, I am a fourth-generation Arizona native, and I thank you for being here. Recent revelations that a sitting senator from LD Eleven influenced the adoption of this map to protect his seat in a Republican district smacks of political intrigue and influence. It is truly disappointing that two previously respected members of our community, the CEO of the Southern Arizona Leadership Council, and the Mayor of Morana, fell victim to these political shenanigans. But the most concerning part of this attempted cover-up is that it appears that three members of this Commission may have violated the guidelines of Prop one oh six by condoning these maps, which now appear to have been drawn under false pretenses. I don't think it is beyond reason to think that the public could now perceive that the independent Chair and the two Republican members of this Commission have been complicit in this blatant attempt to deceive Arizona citizens. Indeed, Chair Newberg has repeatedly asserted that her right-of-center friends deserve to have maps that are drawn to their advantage. I strongly encourage the Commission to reject the current legislative draft maps. These maps should be discarded immediately to prevent any further stain on the legitimacy of this Commission. I stand for fair and competitive maps drawn transparently and devoid of partisan influence. This is the minimum expectation of Pima County citizens and the state of Arizona.
I have a very quick follow-up question. Of the maps that we receive, I'm presuming that essentially almost all of them are partisan or have a self-interest in it. I'm curious, are you suggesting that all maps that have been looked at by partisan institutions ought to be discounted? Okay, thank you.
Your map, Madam.
Okay. Thank you.
To the fact of, an event. That's good, that's good. Good morning, Chair Newberg and fellow Commissioners, I want to thank you, first of all, for the hard work on this important Commission. Your time above all your commitment to the citizens of the state of Arizona, again, thank you for it. My name is Jim McFagin, I live in Morana. I come before the Commission today to strongly urge you to draft, to adopt Draft Ten Point Zero, and in particular Legislative District Seventeen as drawn. This is where we live, work, worship, shop, dine out, and go to movies and plays. It is an area where many of my friends, children, and grandchildren attend excellent public and private schools. LD Seventeen defines a very strong community of interest for us by linking Red Rock, Morana, Oro Valley, Catalina, Eagle Crest Ranch, Saddlebrook, Saddlebrook Ranch, Tancaverty, Houghton Corridor, and Vale. We share, and we share and value similar lifestyles. Like Morana, residents of Tancaverty Valley and Houghton Corridor enjoy a rural lifestyle where horses are allowed in streets, which is true. These people living there have chosen not to live in midtown Tucson, as they have nothing in common with the urban areas. You have on many occasions heard from people on the left side of the aisle calling for competitive districts, I cannot agree more with their position. The current LD Ten is not a competitive district incorporating for the most part of LD Ten into the existing LD Eleven to form the proposed LD Seventeen once. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, I'm Nicole Barasa, Director of Governance and Outreach at the Southern Arizona Leadership Council. I am speaking today on behalf of the one hundred and forty members of SALC, who are CEOs, business, and community leaders, and who work to improve the economic vibrancy and quality of life for our region and state. SALC represents the collective voice of business leaders. The political makeup of our membership is similar to the purple nature of Arizona's voter base. And while we regularly engage in the political sphere to affect positive, positive public policies and outcomes, SALC is staunchly nonpartisan, and our record reflects that. We work closely with members of both sides of the aisle to advance rational, common sense initiatives that improve the region. Former Democratic State Senator Steve Farley recently described SALC as a centrist group that supports issues favored by both parties and seeks a stable business climate. Today, we would like to reiterate our position, which is solely focused on encouraging the Commission to give Pima County balanced representation for all voters at the Legislature. While the current map is not perfect, and no map will ever be, SALC believes adopted Map Ten captures four significant communities of interest in Pima County. A region as large as ours, the second largest in the state, should have representation that allows every voice to be heard. Thank you for your time and your leadership.
We will turn it over to Maryvale for the next ten speakers.
Thank you, and thank you to Maryvale community for hosting the IRC. I will call the next ten speakers, and if you would line up behind me in any order, but our first speaker will be Robert Miguel, Chairman of the Ochkin Indian Community. And then following him will be Steve Slaskowski, Eric Shelley, Marilyn Wilbur, Ann Jeanette Waller, April Hernandez, Jordan Greenslade, Justin Ferguson, Rochelle Smith, and then Summer Baker. Once again, you have a minute thirty, thou will call time at the end of a minute thirty, and please remember to state your name, thank you.
Skook tashvosi jamui, in my language, that's good day to all of you. Good morning Commissioners, my name's Robert Miguel, and I am the Chairman of the Ochkin Indian Community. You last heard from me at the October seventh meeting, where I shared that the Ochkin Community Council was closely monitoring your work and the responses to it. I am here to share our views on the Congressional Map you adopted on October twenty-eighth, and the proposed Congressional District Two. Specifically, I want to address the lack of competitiveness in the proposed Congressional District Two, and how it will directly impact the Ochkin Indian community. By your standards of considering a vote spread between four percent and seven percent to be competitive, the draft Congressional District Two is not a competitive district. The draft Congressional District Two leans Republican by a seven point six percent spread, and the vote swing is zero to nine in favor of Republicans. Essentially, this proposal makes Congressional District Two uncompetitive, and significantly diminishes our chances of a and significantly diminishes our chances of electing a candidate who can fairly and accurately represent us in Congress. Therefore, we urge you to make Congressional District 2 competitive by removing Prescott in Yavapai County and the Santan Valley in Pinal County. To increase population, you can include Castle Grand, Coolidge, and the Southern Graham and Greenlee Counties. These modifications would make the district more like our current Congressional District 1. In essence, we are requesting a more competitive district that gives us a better chance of electing a candidate who understands our needs and our shares, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stephen Slagaki, and I'm speaking in support of AZ Latino Coalition updates from draft congressional map CD 0073. I live in North Phoenix near Tatum and Bell, and I'd like to speak about the differences between that map and the commission's draft map. In the commission's draft map, oh, excuse me, in the commission's draft map, my neighborhood is included in CD 1 together with the communities of Anthem, Carefree, and Cave Creek, but where I live shares very little in common with these areas. The areas north of the 101 are more suburban with less connection to the rest of the city of Phoenix. The Coalition map of CD 1 includes my area together with the city of Phoenix east of the I-17 and north of Van Buren. This makes a lot more sense to me. Phoenix is much too populous to not be divided, but how we divide it is very important. I like that CD 1 is a coalition map anchored in the city of Phoenix, and with this configuration of CD 1, the city of Phoenix is divided up in a way that more accurately reflects communities of interest and helps Phoenix in Congress. In this map, the majority of the city, the core of the city, is represented by just two congressional districts, CD 1 and CD 3. I support this version of CD 1 along with CDs 3, 4, and 8, and I urge you and the commissioners to do as well. Thank you for your time.
Hi, good morning. My name is Eric Shelley. I am a native of the Southeast Valley in the Phoenix metro area, and I've lived in North Phoenix for about 15 years, and I would like to speak about the proposed legislative maps in both of those areas. The first concern I have is the proposed LD 2, which is currently overpopulated by about 12,000 voters. It does share a border with the proposed LD 28, which is underpopulated by about the same number of residents. Since these two areas share a border, it would be very easy to remedy this by simply drawing a few neighborhoods out of LD 2 and into LD 28. The second concern I have has to do with the proposed LD 12 in the Southeast Valley as it extends currently from roughly 43rd Avenue and Pecos all the way over to Lindsay and Elliott in Gilbert. That's a stretch of approximately 30 miles, which is quite a long way for a legislative district in the metropolitan area. I did review the gallery of maps proposed on the IRC website. Map LD 0061 seems to remedy both of these items, and I would ask the commission to have a look at this when you look at your final adjustments. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Marilyn Wilber. I'm a veteran and I live in Surprise, Arizona. As someone who has fought for this country, I know the importance of making sure every community and voter is representative and properly representative and their voices are adequately heard. For the current legislative maps, I feel it would make more sense to connect Surprise with some of the neighborhoods around Sun City and then move El Mirage into the district to the south. I think this would satisfy folks from my neighborhood in Surprise that could be in the district with more like-minded folks in Sun City and parts of Peoria. It would also assure that the Latino community of El Mirage would have better representation of being connected to the neighborhood to itself. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ann Janet, and I live in Reeds Road in Cactus in Surprise. Thank you for allowing me for the time to speak today. I believe that everyone deserves to have their voice heard, and one that happens is deciding who represents us. The West Valley has changed a lot over the last 10 years, and it's important that our new maps reflect that. The Hispanic community is growing in the West Valley, especially around Goodyear, El Mirage, and Avondale. I noticed the maps that El Mirage is in the same district as Surprise and Sun City. I think that it makes more sense if El Mirage is in the district further south, LD 25, then that would then allow the parts of Peoria just north of Sun City to be part of our district, LD 29. I think this would be more, truly reflects the interests that the residents have in common. I think it's a really tough job that the commission has to do, and I don't envy it. Thank you.
Thank you, commission, for the chance to speak. My name is April Hernandez, and I live on the corner of Central and Dunlap. I wanted to say that I am glad that Sunny Slope will be in Legislative District 2 with the rest of the North Mountain community. I'd like to point out that I have listed a few hearings, and everyone I've heard from Sunny Slope has argued that we should be in District 2, which makes me really proud of my community coming together. This new district now includes more of Washington Elementary School District and Glendale Union High School District. I am a working mother of a three-year-old. I am already thinking about the future of his education. If more parents are able to come together in the same district, we will be able to advocate for the best education possible. I think that it connects us to a lot of similar communities along the 17 freeway. I feel that the District 2 should cut off at the 101 to the north because, as many would probably agree, communities south of the 101 have much different interests than those north of the 101. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jordan. I live over on 28th Street and Osborne Road, which is in Legislative District 1, or the proposed Legislative District 1, kind of on the border of 1 and 4. I want to thank the commission for the time to speak. I know this is a difficult task. One of the changes that I'm hoping to see for the state legislative map in my area is that the Osborne, Camelback, Arcadia neighborhoods be connected and unified into District 4. I think these East Phoenix neighborhoods have a lot in common, and while it may make sense in like some of the bigger congressional districts to combine them into like central Phoenix neighborhoods like Encanto, I think in the state legislative districts where you could be a little more targeted with your communities of interest, I think we'd be better served separated from the central Phoenix neighborhoods and connected with the rest of the Camelback Mountain area up into Paradise Valley. So, thank you for your time and have a wonderful day.
Good morning. My name is Justin Ferguson. I currently live on what would be the cusp of District 8, Congressional District 8 and District 1. What I like about Arizona is that we actually have independent thinking. There's no group thought. I've lived in the Bay Area. I've lived in New York. Everybody thinks the same thing. In order to preserve this and have this represented, we actually have to have congressional districts that actually have people similarly situated. District 1 as presently is proposed fails at that. It has urban areas, suburban areas, and rural areas. And one of the things that this sentiment, this dissatisfaction is not just mine. It's actually been expressed by people in North Phoenix and Fountain Hills. And basically, my proposed solution, or one solution to this, would be for us to use like the 101 as a border and capture part of like the Black Canyon Corridor, and that would allow us to have an urban area, and then District 8 could capture some of the less urban areas. Thank you for your work, and I think this would be a good solution. Have a good day.
Hi, good morning. My name is Rachel Smith. I live in Surprise at the corner of Litchfield and Cactus. First off, I'd like to thank the commissioners for your extremely hard work. I know that it's not easy, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. I'm here to speak today about the new LD 29. I believe that the communities directly north of Sun City should be included in this district rather than El Mirage. I feel as though this makes more sense because Surprise, Sun City West, Sun City, and the area just north of Sun City, like Park Ridge, even though it's technically in Peoria, have a lot in common, both in demographics and in their interests. I realize that as a younger person, I don't fit into the expected demographic of Surprise, but my parents retired there, and I understand the importance of keeping the community that they belong to together. I work in Phoenix, but due to the pandemic and a lot of working from home, I spent a lot more time in Surprise. However, the times that I've been in El Mirage, Litchfield Park, and Avondale, I've noticed that it's home to a younger population with interests that differ greatly from the areas of Surprise and Sun City. So I ask you to include the neighborhoods just north of Sun City in LD 29 and move El Mirage into LD 25. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for letting me get to speak again, commissioners. I'm going to be speaking about something a little bit different as some new maps have been submitted into you guys, so I wanted to comment on those. I would like to semi-ly approve the submitted draft map for LD 0061 for LD 12 only. Won't be speaking much on the other ones, but with the exception of the southern border, it should be moved so that the LD only reaches to the South 10 and South 202 freeway. Sun Lakes within LD 12 should be moved into Chandler where the LD 13 is proposed. I've heard from several speakers from the December 2 meeting that Sun Lakes is more aligned with the community in Chandler. I actually have a friend's mother that lives there, and I would agree that's the case, is they're more part of Chandler than that Awatuki area, which is more of like a younger community. And respecting that boundary line would greatly benefit the majority of the locals that live in that area. And I want to briefly touch on LD 8 for that same map. The northern border should be cut off on McDonald Drive, as many speakers from the previous hearing at the Mayo Clinic in Scottsdale had voiced. According to the majority of those speakers, the McCormick Ranch would like to remain in the northern Scottsdale area. So, thank you.
And now back to Michelle in Tucson. I'd like to invite up Senator Sally Ann Gonzalez.
Good morning. I am Senator Sally Ann Gonzalez of current Legislative District 3, and I'm here to speak on communities of interest. I currently, in particular, my community, the Pasquayaki Nation. Pasquayaki Nation has been drawn up in District 23, which will also include the San Javier community here in Tucson, and all the way to the Honotam Nation, and all the way to Yuma. It's a very different district that I currently represent, and I'd like to tell you why. I mean, most of it, District 23 will become a very rural area, but in particular, it will also keep indigenous communities together, except for Pasquayaki tribe. I think, if she hasn't spoken already, I know there will be a tribal representative, councilwoman Erminia Frias, who will also testify along the same lines as I'm about to. And we have communities, Yweme communities or Yaki communities, in two other ones in district in Tucson, and that is the Ol Pasquayaki community and also the Barri Liva community, and those should be kept together. Thank you.
The next speaker is Pima County Supervisor Alita Grijalva.
Thank you, and thank you so much for your time, Chair Newberg and commissioners. I know how difficult this process is, so I totally appreciate your time. We're very pleased meeting with Chair Newberg and look forward to continued collaboration. My name is Alita Grijalva. I am co-chair for the Arizona Latino Redistricting Coalition, and we did recently submit maps, and so we'd like you to pay special consideration to the draft congressional map CD 0073. The Arizona Coalition's proposed map was created by identifying concentrations of Latino voting age population within cohesive communities of interest. The Coalition's congressional map creates two districts, CD 3 and CD 7, that perform in elections as Latino districts. They protect the strength of the Latino vote, unite communities of interest, and are also compact as possible. The Coalition has drawn districts around the rest of the state and served to incorporate the Latino voters in other areas in congressional districts that are more competitive, like CD 1 and have strong coalition of minority voters like in CD 2. I realize that my time is limited, but we are going to submit a narrative of the changes to all of the commissioners, and we also created legislative maps. So we did a map of the entire region as opposed to just trying to focus on different areas because we understand that the needs of our community are great, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
I just would like to make an announcement. Anybody who is not speaking will need to leave the room. If you've already spoken or you're not speaking, you will need to leave. So if you're not planning to publicly speak, you will need to leave. We have 200 people outside that want to get in the room, so please exit if you are not speaking or if you've already spoken. Thank you.
I will be reading the next eight speakers. Eight speakers, please listen up. Michelle, can we hang on and let people exit first, just for one minute? If any of you have filled out any of these maps and forms, you can leave them with me. I'll send it over to Mary Vale for their speakers, if that's okay, Madam Chair. Mary Vale, if you'll do five speakers, please.
Thanks, Michelle. Yes, I will. Our next five speakers, in any order, please, are Annelise Ortiz, Candace French, Alejandro Chavez, Watacha Chavez, or Natasha Chavez, and Cecilia Moreno. And just to remind you, you have a minute 30 seconds, and please state your name.
Thank you. My name is Annelise Ortiz. I'm a Phoenix resident. I was born and raised here in the Valley of the Sun, and I work to educate and energize voters in Maricopa County. I have concerns about the current draft maps, particularly as they are drawn in heavily Latino areas such as West Phoenix. As a Latina, it's important to me for my community to have a fair shot to elect candidates of their choosing. In fact, this right is protected under the Voting Rights Act. Arizona's nearly one-third Latino in our population should be accurately represented in the draft maps. However, the current draft maps pack Latino communities into just a few legislative districts, which serves to diminish our voting power. I'm an auntie to six kids, and it's really important to me that they end up seeing people in positions of power who are fully representative of them and committed to serving the best interests of their community. I ask you to please consider drawing a fifth majority Latino legislative district in Maricopa County so the voices of our families can be heard. Additionally, for congressional maps, the Latino Coalition for Fair Redistricting submitted a map on November 30 that includes two majority Latino districts and two highly competitive districts. And I really care deeply about making sure districts stay competitive, particularly because in the hundreds of conversations I've had with voters throughout my work, I hear people express that they feel their vote does not matter because they live in districts that are so far skewed, and that is damaging to our democracy. Thank you so much for listening.
My name is Candace French. I'm an attorney with Saks Tierney, and our firm represents the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission. The Human Rights Commission is an entity of the Navajo Nation government authorized to represent the nation in redistricting activities. The commission has previously The Commission has previously submitted proposed legislative and congressional plans along with its legal justification to the Redistricting Commission for consideration of a negative deviation that exceeds the traditional maximum negative deviation of 5%. However, the Commission's proposal is not reflected in the draft maps prepared by the Redistricting Commission, and in fact, reflects a legislative District 6 that does not have a Native American voting age population that approximates the current 63%. The Humans Rights Commission has developed an alternative Legislative District 6 map that accommodates other northern Arizona community interests. Native Americans face special circumstances that require the Redistricting Commission to favorably consider adjusting the deviation requirements to strengthen the Native American voter participation and turnout. The special circumstances include the depressed socioeconomic conditions, the 2020 census undercount, reduced Native American voter participation, and the COVID-19 pandemic. Understanding the stage of the Redistricting Commission's deliberations, the Human Rights Commission is submitting a plan with a Legislative District 6 negative 5% deviation that provides a Native American voting age population of 56.4%. That plan is attached to the Human Rights Commission resolution that I'm providing to you today. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alejandro Chavez. I live in West Phoenix, and I'd like to talk about the importance of representation and how it matters. Look, it's important that we keep communities whole. Parts of Glendale need to stay as much together as possible, and parts of Peoria need to stay together as much as possible. Those things matter to communities, you know, when you're talking about kid pickup, when you're talking about grocery stores and those things. Those things matter to people's lives. And so that's why I'm here, to speak, me and my family are here to speak in support of Arizona Coalition updates from draft map, congressional map, CD 0073, as well as legislative district maps submitted by the Arizona Latino Coalition. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Natasha, and I'm also speaking on behalf of the Arizona Latino Coalition map, congressional map, CD 0073, and also supporting the legislative district map that they have put out as well. Overall, this map makes a lot of sense for the Hispanic voting age population in CD 7, and improves CD 3 by taking Peoria out. It also keeps most of the East Valley cities together and does not divide them up. Rural voters get a stronger voice in CD 9, and the mining communities are kept whole in CD 6. Please support the Coalition map as it truly reflects the diversity of our state, rural, urban, Latino, African-American, white, native, and more. We understand that you have a lot of criteria to take into account, and like competitiveness and everything, and we thank you for your time. And also, I just want to say thank you to the board for meeting with different leaders, I believe it was yesterday. So hopefully, we can keep all those inputs in mind. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Cecilia Moreno. I was born in Glendale and have lived in the Maryville area for 55 years. I have lived in the West Valley my entire life. I taught in the Glendale Elementary School District for 13 years, 17 years at Turbot Brown High School in the Phoenix Union District. My recommendation for redistricting has to do with school districts. All of Maryville should be kept together, downtown Glendale, far west Phoenix, and far west Glendale. The recent draft for LD 26 ends at 83rd Avenue and Camelback. I feel that should be moved west over the 101 freeway, so that neighborhoods with similar demographics could stay in one district. Try to keep elementary districts together. Currently, LD 29, the school districts are divided into different legislative districts, making it difficult for Representatives to represent schools. As a retired teacher, keeping elementary school districts in one district, one legislative district would allow elected officials to better serve their communities and schools with similar demographics. Thank you.
Thank you, speakers. And now we will go back to Michelle in Tucson.
I'll be reading the names of the next eight speakers. Please listen carefully. Claudia Levin, Diane Dorvinsk, Virginia West, Diane Neville, Gail Camaras, Margaret Vaughn, Arlen Osterland, George McGowan, McGowey. Claudia.
My name is Claudia Levin, and I live in Sarita. I live next door to the Toona'oodam Nation. I drive into Tucson often for medical appointments, dining, and entertainment. That is my community of interest. I support map LD 0055. I have never been to Sierra Vista, Bisbee, Benson, or any other place in Cochise County, and have no plans to do so. Even if I wanted to do so, the distances are too long to be practical. I believe that Sarita and Green Valley should not be divided into two different legislative districts, and that the I-19 corridor should remain intact. As currently constituted, LD 2 has been a competitive district, which is one of the criteria that the Commission is legally bound to consider. Sarita, Green Valley, and the Toona'oodam Nation are strongly connected to Tucson and should remain in the same district, which is one of the, the 10.0 map fails to follow the Commission's own legally required criteria for proposed LD 21, in that the proposed district is not compact nor contiguous and divides the region's community of interest. A political party is not a community of interest under the law. Therefore, to make LD 21 more Republican violates the legal requirements and constitutes gerrymandering. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Diane Neville, and I moved from Phoenix to Tucson four years ago. I live in the current LD 10 and CD 2 districts, which have been very competitive, with both Democrats and Republicans winning elections there. This is ideal because the best candidate will win, avoiding extremist winners. I want to address the new CD 6. The current map approved by the Commission looks like an elephant with its trunk reaching out to Casa Grande. These are my observations. Casa Grande does not belong in CD 6. It's much more closely aligned with Phoenix. A lot of people who live in Casa Grande work in Phoenix, shop in Phoenix, do business in Phoenix. They don't come to Tucson. If you remove the elephant's nose from that CD, CD 6 can contain more of Tucson and Pima County going south to the Santa Cruz line. Also, Tucson's Davis-Monthan Air Force Base and Sierra Vista's Fort Huachuca should be in the same district, because I think they'll get better coverage and more effective representation with the same person taking care of it. I support the CD map 0072, or it's been referred to as the trunkless elephant. Please reconfigure CD 6 with this map in mind. Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Virginia West, and I'm a resident of Tucson. There are two key principles I would like to speak to. The first is fairness. Since the last maps were drawn, the population has become much more diverse. Fair districts would comply with the U.S. Constitution and Voting Rights Act, include equal population, be compact and contiguous, and respect communities of interest. We must protect and enhance the voting power of our growing communities of color. Secondly, Arizona is a politically competitive state, and our new maps must reflect this. This will protect against extremism and encourage better representation. Candidates for office will have to appeal to a broad spectrum of voters, and will have to vote hard, or will have to work hard to get reelected. There is not much incentive to run for office if districts have a preponderance of one party. Having fair and competitive districts will encourage Arizona residents to become more active in our system of governing. A thriving democracy is an active democracy. I want to thank the members of the IRC Committee for this difficult work. You are truly public servants. Please let the maps uphold all of the key principles. I am so grateful to live in a country whose democratic government allows me to speak out free from oppression about my important issues and beliefs and be heard. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gail Camaras. I live near North Pantano Road in Tucson. According to draft Legislative Map 10, I will be in proposed District 18. That district does not conform to the standards required by law. It is not compact or contiguous. This proposed district would stretch from southeast Tucson near the Boneyard to the fringe of Oro Valley in the far northwest. To drive from one end of this district to another would require getting on the interstate. A person living in a metropolitan area should not need a 30-mile drive on an interstate highway to travel from one end of her district to the other. The current maps neither comply with the Voting Rights Act nor recognize that each major political party represents only about one-third of the state population. Fair and competitive districts should be the default. Draft Map 10 doesn't respect the compact and contiguous requirements, skipping over nearby populations and physical barriers to include those populations further away. Now it appears that there is some prohibited influence relating to state legislator Vincent Leach. This casts an appearance of impropriety and corruption on the Commission. Legitimacy of our redistricting process is at risk. This Commission must do better by all Republicans, by all, for all Arizonans. Thank you.
I'm sorry, did I miss Diane Dvorfskin? Oh, okay.
My name is Margaret Vaughn. I've lived in Tucson for 30 years. My home is in an ungated community with a diverse mix of people, closely reflecting the population living in the current CD 2. CD 2 is geographically compact and contiguous. People here eat, shop, exercise, and attend events at the same general Tucson locations. Our doctors, dentists, medical facilities are all located here. When I arrived 30 years ago, Jim Colby, a Republican, was our representative. He retired and was replaced by Gabby Giffords and Ron Barber, Democrats. After Gabby, there was Martha McSally, a Republican, followed by Ann Kirkpatrick, a Democrat. It's hard to get more fair and competitive than that. Adding Casa Grande and Oro Valley to the present CD 2 does absolutely nothing to improve our diversity, our competitiveness, or our community of interest. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. I urge you to adopt the new CD 0072 map, which most closely resembles our current CD 2. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Arlen Ostland, and I have called Green Valley home for 11 years. I have serious concerns about the draft Legislative Map 10. My objections include the following. Putting Green Valley in District 19 does not keep us with Sarita. My local grocery store's in Sarita. I head there when I want pizza. I shop in Sarita. I don't head east over the Santa Rita Mountains to the New Mexico border to shop. In essence, the I-19 corridor is our community of interest. The 10 map does not meet the Prop 106 criteria of contiguous and compact, nor does it meet the criteria of using geographical features. Why have our district crossing over the Santa Rita Mountains? Frankly, that's absurd. Again, Green Valley's community of interest is the I-19 corridor, not east of the Santa Ritas. I also object to the 10 map in that it's not competitive. It gives a 19.4% edge to the Republicans, making it a Republican district. This violates the constitutional requirement. The Republicans are not a community of interest. I propose that the Commission consider adopting LD 0055 map. This puts Green Valley in District 21. It keeps our community of interest contiguous and compact. It utilizes the Santa Rita Mountains as a geographical border and provides for a competitive district. I urge the Commission to do the right thing and nullify LD 10.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is George McGaffey. The draft map 10.0 certainly does not respect our community of interest. By separating our communities, this area loses its competitive nature. By placing Green Valley in District 19, it would share no common interest with the others in this area. Sierra Vista and Globe are military and mining communities, unlike the retirement communities of Green Valley or bedroom communities of Sarita. The definition of compactness should not disregard the natural boundaries. The Sarita Mountains have been a natural boundary for the I-19 corridor for years. It should remain so for the benefit of these communities along this natural route. The two sister cities on this map are one common area. For this reason, Green Valley and Sarita should not be separated. Both communities work, play, share church, school, and dine together. Regardless of the party affiliation, this extreme, oversized district does a disservice for all those in its communities. Designing District 19 this way has created a district that violates the constitutional requirements of practicable and competitiveness by separating communities of interest. I would encourage you to place Green Valley in District 21, and please use the natural boundaries to redraw this final new map. Thank you, Commissioners.
I will be reading the next 10 speakers. Clarice Jenkins Sherry, Joe Bogart, Debra Melton, if you'll please line up behind me accordingly, David Freel, Brian Pickle, Margaret Nichols, Kay Schreiner, Dr. Marshall, Jean McCollin, it looks like. The next speaker is Corales Jenkins Sherry.
My name is Corales Jenkins Sherry. I live in Oro Valley, and I'm retired. I do not support the configuration for LD 17 version 10. Please go back to the draft map, draft map number nine for LD 17. My friends and my communities of interest includes Casa Dobies, where I shop at Safeway, and Sprouts. My medical appointments take me there also. Oro Valley is a urban suburban area and really has nothing in common with rural areas such as Tancaverte, Vale, and the Houghton Corridor. Oro Valley is actually annexed property in Casas Adobis, such as the Westward Look Resort, and plans to add more in that area. I believe the northern Pima County and Amphitheater Unified School District boundaries should be respected. I thank you all Commissioners for all the work you've put in on these hearings, and I hope that you'll weigh my comments equally with those of a mayor and a senator that have made their views known to you. Again, thank you so much for your efforts. Thank you.
Joe Bogart Morana, referencing LD 17 map 10.0, not compact, contiguous, bold. Compact refers to the deviation from the mean. Contiguous is the angle and the number of deviations. Straight lines and circles equal zero perfection. LD 17 has three sides 90% straight. The fourth deviation is measured in meters, not miles. With few exceptions, LD 17 is the most compact contiguous district on the map, inconsistent with the claims of gerrymandering. Look at the map. Competitive districts, those advocating for it failed to put a face to the concept, and only wished to apply it to specific districts. This is called targeting, a tactic used by authoritarian rule to subvert the will and the majority to achieve a specific result. If used, numbers need to be established, as you did with the plus or minus 5% population... If used, numbers need to be established, as you did with the plus or minus 5% population, and applied equally to all districts. Otherwise, it is discriminatory, placing the right of the majority higher than the district-- than another district. Thank you for your time and dedication. Your responsibilities are heavy. We place our trust in your wisdom. Joe Bogart, LD 17 map 10.0.
And this is just a reminder for anybody who may not have heard it if you were outside, that anybody who is spoken or is not speaking-- so anybody who's already spoken, if you'll please leave so we can bring more people in, that would be great. Go ahead.
My name is Deborah Melton, and I live in Green Valley. That is my physical address. However, I am actually in the town of Sarita. I am concerned about LD map-- or proposed map 10.0. It splits Green Valley, Sarita, and the I-19 corridor. The I-19 corridor is what unites my community. It is a commerce corridor. It unites commerce, it unites environmental issues, and it unites us culturally. Please keep the I-19 corridor together. The Arizona Constitution created this bipartisan commission with many goals in mind, and competitive districts that respect natural boundaries like the Sarita Mountains are part of that. We need-- Green Valley and Sarita need to be in LD 21. I would urge you to support map 0055, which does address that. The other concern that I have with LD 10 is the partisan way that it was presented to the commission. It violates the criteria of redistricting outlined in the Constitution and does not make it as competitive as it is now. Arizona's a growing state with people moving in from all over the country all the time, effectively turning Arizona purple. Thank you.
My name is David Frill. I live in Green Valley, Arizona. Been a resident there for four years. I'm a retired naval officer, 20 years in the service. I'm an independent voter. I voted on both sides of the tickets. I encourage you as Commissioner, first of all, thanks for the work that you do, to reflect when you make your decisions on the intent of the Arizona voters. They wanted competitive districts. That means equally amongst Republicans, independents, and Democrats, and any other political affiliation. I want to applaud my fellow citizens who are here today, obviously are very interested on both sides of the-- of these issues. I want to thank you for the job that you're going to be doing, and I hope that you will give the intent of the Arizona voters, when they establish this commission, due thought before you make your decisions. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brian Pickle. I'm the owner of CD 0072. As I looked at your draft maps, I struggled with the rationale behind the teapot spout or elephant trunk, or whatever you want to call it, that goes all the way up into Penal County. I tried to address that issue by redrawing the district, eliminating the trunk or the spout. I also addressed several of the concerns expressed by the mayor of Tucson. The way that map is currently drawn, it's hard to see, but in downtown Tucson, rather than splitting the business districts, we've kept the University of Arizona, Main Gate Square, the Fourth Avenue Business District, downtown Tucson, and the San Augustine Retail Area in the same congressional district, which makes much more sense than splitting that if you're truly interested in communities of interest. Eliminating the spout also makes the district more compact-- excuse me-- shortening the northwest-southeast travel time in that district by almost 50 miles. So it also keeps the I-19 corridor whole, so Sarita and Green Valley are in the same district. As you continue to deliberate, I would appreciate your consideration of eliminating the spout on CD 6. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you. I'm Margaret Nichols. My husband and I have been in Oro Valley since 2002. We settled there to be near our son and family, who live seven miles west of us. I call Oro Valley Casa Dobies and Morana my community. We love the richness of nearby town parks, state parks, national parks, bike paths, restaurants, movies, plays, medical services, shopping, personal providers, et cetera, all within a 15-minute drive from our home. Catalina and Casa Dobies are easy drives on Highway 77, Oracle Road. It's a short east-west route between Morana and the Oro Valley area. I'm concerned that proposed map 10.0 creates an ungainly LD 17, and among other issues, attempts to put my community together with Tancaverte and Vale. To get to those locations requires at least a 90-minute round-trip drive that goes all the way around the Catalina Mountains. There are no direct routes connecting Tancaverte or Vale. Residents of my community have little reason to be involved in the civic or cultural or economic activity of Tancaverte or Vale, and I very much doubt that they ever spend much time or money in the Oro Valley area. Keeping in mind the required factors for creating new legislative districts, I support map 9.0, which has borders that follow the geography of our area, incorporates towns in my community, integrates the voting interests of the Tona'otum, and thank you so much for your efforts.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Kay Schreiner. First, I'd like to thank you for your public service. You have a tough job, and I appreciate you listening to all this public comment. I know it takes forever. I'm here to comment on map 10 of LD 17, which has been adopted by the commission. Map 10 was presented by the Southern Arizona Leadership Council, which got it from the Pima County Republican Party. It was presented as a map representing a community of interest, a claim that apparently convinced some on this commission that establishing a Pima County district for voters with right-of-center views is an acceptable objective of redistricting. It is not. Worse, time has shown that the purpose behind proposed map 10 may be to protect a sitting legislator. This intent has been suggested by a recent investigation that reveals many communications between an incumbent Republican legislator with others he enlisted for his project. The investigation reveals that the legislator-- legislator emailed a letter that he wanted signed by the mayor of Morana and submitted as the mayor's own. The report states that the letter was submitted to the IRC the next day on Town of Morana letterhead. This letter argued, among other things, that this legislator's hometown should be included in the district. I have no independent knowledge of these events, but I'd suggest that you might want to look into them because they're very concerning. The IRC is not allowed to consider incumbency. Thank you.
I am Dr. Jaclyn Marshall, and unlike draft map 9.0, the LD 17 draft-- adopted draft map 10.0 does not meet the compact and contiguous requirement because it processes both county and natural boundaries. It does not meet the communities of interest requirement with no shared water resources nor shared school districts. It does not meet the competitive standard, giving a 10-point advantage to one political party. The IRC was created to ensure that all legislative districts are fair and competitive. The LD 17 adopted draft map is a prime example of the type of blatant gerrymandering this commission was created to prevent, and so it should. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jean McConie. I'm a resident of Oro Valley, a retired teacher, and I'm-- I'm sorry.
Go ahead. No, go ahead. That was my fault.
Anyways, I live in Oro Valley, and in the adopted legislative map, Oro Valley would be found in LD 17, and it should not be. Oro Valley is currently in LD 11, and that is a very safe Republican district. We've had elected Republican state legislatures for the last 10 years. These legislatures have ignored Oro Valley voices and best interests. According to the official canvas from the 2020 election, Oro Valley supported Proposition 208 to fully fund schools by 53% of the vote. Our representation immediately passed laws to undermine it. Oro Valley gets its clean water from a variety of sources, and yet our legislators weakened water quality requirements and passed a law that limits the use of new data for assured water supplies for development. And recently, Oro Valley, along with Tucson Electric, constructed solar at a nearby park, and it generates enough solar for 50 homes. And again, our legislatures passed a law to undermine the work of the ACC and try to curb renewable energy sources. So we do not belong in a district that doesn't represent us. Thank you so much for your time.
We're going to read the next 10 speakers, but I just want to let anybody who is in the room know that if you have already spoken, please exit. If you are not speaking, please exit. We need more people to come in. Thank you so much.
I will be reading the names of the next 10 speakers, and if you'll line up behind me accordingly. Gabriella Kelly, Susan Anderson, Misty Atkins, Karen Wisner, Betty Benson Bengsting, Meredith Aaronson, Jason Banner, Tracy Bunker Mince, Brenda Wexler, John Menamy. Gabrielle?
Thank you. Skutash, Anyanypchukik, Gabriella Casares Kelly, Vismochkup Kamchun. Hi, I'm Gabriella Casares Kelly. I'm from the Tona'otum Nation as a tribal member, and I'm also an elected official for Pima County. I want to urge the commission to keep Native American communities together. One of the things that I find on a daily basis is that I am constantly having to educate folks about the issues that are occurring in Native American communities. When we split up districts, we split up the need and the work that Native people have to do to advocate on behalf of our communities. It makes it much more difficult, and the-- the communities that we are talking about, we are addressing, the issues that are impacting us often have-- have to be explained so much larger. I mean, I'm thinking even now with a minute and a half of explaining the need to keep Tona'otum community and Pasco Yaki community as close together as possible. Just want to urge you, follow the Latino Coalition maps. Those have the interest of our communities in mind, and that is about it. Thank you.
Actually, I have a follow-up question, please. You raised an important point. You know, in our-- in our society, people don't always have the number of people in the right places. You mentioned similar interests with the Latino community. Do you find that there's natural alliances, similar, you know, political needs? And if you want to maybe highlight where maybe some of those common communities are living?
Yeah, well, when we think about the Native American community in general, a lot of times, we often think of reservations only. I'm a Tucson resident. I live here in Tucson. There is a huge population in urban Tucson of Native American folks here, living amongst Latino communities. We are not-- we are no longer required to stay on reservations. So we-- so we live in all of these communities that you're talking about. We live in Green Valley. We live in Oro Valley. We live in Morana. We live in South Tucson. We live in Tucson proper. I live on the northwest side. So we are everywhere. And, you know, we're talking about a community. Pima comes from the Otom language. In Tucson, Shtrukshon comes from the Otom language. In Arizona, Arshon comes from the Otom language. There are 22 recognized distinct federal nations within Arizona, but the representation isn't there. And if we look around at who is speaking up about these communities, you know, I am a lifelong Pima County resident. I have lived in Arizona all 39 years of my life. We're talking about people who have come from, you know, have lived here in Arizona for three years, five years. That makes a really big difference, and so we're everywhere.
Thank you. We'll keep that in mind.
My name is Susan Anderson. My community is in the proposed LD 17. I am troubled by the fact that the 10.0 map is by far the worst one published so far. The Arizona Constitution requires that the districts be compact, contiguous, respect communities of interest, and be competitive where practicable. In northwest Pima County, the IRC has lumped Picture Rocks and Avra Valley in an LD with Penal County. Those communities are part of Pima County and part of the Morana Unified School District. They should be part of the new LD 17. However, the Red Rock area is in Penal County, so they should be an LD 16 with the rest of Penal County. Now, actually, none of the maps submitted thus far are 100% ideal. That's no doubt impossible, but there are several that are more compact, more representative of our communities, and less gerrymandered than the 10.0 map. These include map 9.0, submitted by Commissioner Lerner, map LD 0055, submitted by Barbara Tellman, and another good map is LD 0059, submitted by Dean Maitland. I expect the IRC to make a good-faith effort to be fair. However, my personal faith in this process has been eroded over the course of the past few months.
Misty Atkins. Calling Misty Atkins a second time.
My name is Karen Wisner. I live in Oro Valley. I am here to ask you to adopt the draft map 10.0, and in particular Legislative District 17 as drawn. It's not perfect, but I think that for community of interest, Red Rock, Morana, Oro Valley, Catalina, Eagle Crest Ranch, Saddle Brook, Saddle Brook Ranch, Tancaverte, Hokutin Corridor, and Vale have similar lifestyles. As a-- as a Native American that just spoke, she lives outside of-- off the reservation. We're all mixed. I'm Cherokee. I don't have a reservation in Arizona, but I can vote in my tribe. And I had-- so I just wanted-- I've heard several Native Americans get up and speak, and I had spoken previously about this. There are-- and I'm trying to think off the top of my head. There's 22 represented tribe tribal nations in Arizona. There's about-- on the reservation or on the-- in the nation, in all of these nations, there's about 280,000 Native Americans that are represented. So I think that they should have a district of their own. It's a little bit over what the requirement is. I think the requirement is 240,000, but at least they would be better represented if they were together. And then the people that live off the nation, they can vote in their tribe and anyway get their-- their needs met that way. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dion Heimings Sr. My wife and I have lived in Oro Valley and Ancaia Concordia for the past 29 years after escaping the state of New York in 1992. My wife and I chose Oro Valley first and foremost because of the exceptional reputation the school systems had, the incredible natural beauty of this area, and the fact that it was considered a very safe community. Raising my children in this community was the best decision we ever made. I strongly urge you to adopt draft map 10.0, which would create Legislative District 17 as drawn. This legislative-- This legislative district would include Morana, Oro Valley, Catalina, Saddle Brook, Saddle Brook Ranch, the Tancaverty Valley, as well as Vail and the Houghton Corridor. The people who live in these areas chose not to live in the city of Tucson. They wanted a more rural and quiet and peaceful community and have little in common with those who live within the city of Tucson. Likewise, the residents of Saddle Brook and Saddle Brook Ranch have much more in common with those of us who live in Oro Valley and Morana than they do in northern Penal County. They shop here, recreate here, use the state-of-the-art medical facilities. Creating LD 17 also gives the residents that live in unincorporated Pima County a voice in the legislature in Phoenix. The residents of southern Arizona who live in unincorporated Pima County need a check and balance on the city of Tucson.
Good morning. My name is Betty Bengsting, and I'm here to represent the Nonpartisan League of Women Voters of Arizona. The best final maps will be those that provide an opportunity for all Arizonans to have a voice in their government. Safe districts do not provide that opportunity. Safe districts result in elections decided in closed primaries by voters from one party and in uncontested elections and discouraged and disengaged voters. These are the problems that led Arizonans to pass Prop 106 20 years ago. The approach taken by this commission in the draft map seems to be to balance the number of districts leaning Republican or Democratic rather than to make the districts themselves competitive. By your own analysis, you have created 14 legislative districts where Republicans always win and 11 where Democrats always win, leaving only five legislative districts where it is possible for an election to swing to the other party. Only two legislative districts are truly competitive. Vote spreads in 15 of the legislative districts are above 20%, including three where it is an astounding 50%, which seems the very definition of packing. There is ample opportunity for the commission to increase the number of competitive districts, especially in urban areas. The vote spread in four of the nine congressional districts range from 14.7% to over 40%. You must fulfill both the letter and the spirit of the law. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you. Good morning. I'm Meredith Aronson. I'm here today representing the Broadmore Broadway Village neighborhood in midtown Tucson. In preparation for today's comments, we surveyed our neighborhood. A full 80% to 6% of our neighbors indicated that they oppose our neighborhood's inclusion in Legislative District 21, as it's drawn today. When asked if they supported a legislative district more aligned with our community of interest in central Tucson and more balanced in terms of independent, Democratic, and Republican voters, 90% responded with strongly agree or agree. These results, I believe, deserve your attention. Through comments received on this survey and through conversations between neighbors, we know that there's significant anger right now for what is seen as partisan gerrymandering. We know that competitive districts support active and balanced political debate between parties and reduce partisan friction of interest to us. Additionally, we do not believe that inclusion with the more rural region running south to the border aligns with our urban, midtown neighborhood community of interest. I've lived both in Tucson and Santa Cruz County. Consuming issues for rural issues like Santa Cruz County along the border include mining, water security, broadband access, and immigration. Consuming interests for Broadmore Broadway Village neighborhoods include quality of life concerns like densification, telecom, and transportation infrastructure, and quality and range of schools. Again, different agendas. Our neighborhood appreciates the opportunity to be heard and will look forward to being better aligned with an urban community of interest in the redrawn competitive district. Thank you.
Morning. I'm Jackie Bauer. I'd like to read a quote from Chairwoman Newberg. Thank you for your service. She says, and I quote, "I have become increasingly concerned about the tone and tenor of our public discourse. I see a rise in identity politics, a rise in a tribal mentality, and I see less productivity and civility on Capitol Hill." When I read this in the Jewish News, I was so excited to know that you were taking the helm of this really important process. I feel like I could have said those words myself. Instead, I've been really frustrated by this process and your implementation of it, the dismissal of competitive districts that can help us avoid extremism and get that civility we're talking about. I was disappointed at your openly vocal support of drawing districts to guarantee representation for a single political party. We now have a map where 25 of the 30 legislative districts are considered safe for one party or the other, and that directly impacts my neighborhood of Broadmore in central Tucson, which has been separated from its community of interest by the sprawling and uncompetitive LD 21. Safe districts produce extreme candidates, the kind of candidates who win by appealing only to their base during the primary. So I hope you truly meant it when you said you believe in civility. I believe in it, too. These maps are your legacy, and this is what people will remember you for. So I plead with you to redraw. Thank you.
Tracy Bunker Metz. First, thank you for your time, attention, and diligence in the redistricting of our beloved state of Arizona. My name is Tracy, and I reside on an acre in Catalina, just north of Oro Valley. I would like to ask you to adopt draft map 10.0 on my behalf and on behalf of my daughter, who lives off Harrison on the south side, just outside of the city limits, family, friends that live in Vail, and every equestrian and gardener in between who cherish their lifestyle. I am asking for myself, my family, and friends for an opportunity to have our voices heard and our way of life protected and represented. I am thankful that it has been previously stated that all Pima County voices have a right to be heard as Americans. The area of ideas should be open to all Arizona citizens. You may not be aware of what Tucson City Council has voted to do to the citizens in the unincorporated areas. They intend to charge citizens in these unincorporated areas more for water than citizens that live within the city limits. I'm sure you've heard of the "from each according to his means to each according to his needs" motto out of the Communist Manifesto. This, along with other actions, is what we need a check against. Adopting the map 10 will also create a competitive district as LD 17, which will help balance the other areas that have not been competitive but are heavily weighted to the opposite of what I and many others in this area believe. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Good morning. I'm Brenda Wexler. I'm currently from LD 10. And I want to say that a picture is worth a thousand words. And when I came in this morning and I saw half the room basically red, I knew where they stood. And, and when I saw Ms. Newberg wearing red, it totally threw me off, and I don't know what to say.
You know what? For the record, I would like to clarify. I woke up this morning and just threw on what I felt comfortable. Never gave it a thought. And I am so sorry, but the fact that I didn't even give it a thought really reflects how I see things. So I apologize.
And I'm, and I'm wearing blue just to confuse the crowd, so.
And in fact, I was going to wonder if as many men get as many questions about their clothing.
Well, that's precisely what I thought. I really don't know what to say now.
Give her, yes, she gets her two minutes.
LD 10 is the most exquisitely designed, fair, competitive legislative map. I cannot believe that map 10 blew up the LD 10. And you all know, it's been said many, many times. Susan Bickel said it. Gail Camara said it. So I want to underscore whatever those people said about the commission being fair and impartial. I hope that this group here can have you give some thoughts to making sure that map LD 10 isn't adopted as constructed. So because LD 10 was changed to LD 21, and you could put that on the board, it has been suggested to me that it's because of District 17. And I believe 17 is gerrymandered, nealmandered. Thank you.
Tracy Bunker Metzer, second call. Tracy Bunker Metzer.
Just so you know, we have security calling names outside. So if they're called in here and they don't answer, we have security calling them. So if they're, if they're not coming up, it's because they're not here.
Hello. My name is John McMenamy. First, I want to thank each of you for being here and providing these hearings regarding Arizona redistricting. I know it takes a lot of energy and time and much less, a lot of gas to make these meetings happen. I live in north Pima County, just south of Catalina in the Black Horse Ranch development. My wife and I moved here to Arizona from Texas in 2008 for my job and absolutely love living here in Arizona. I would like to continue with the message to encourage you to adopt draft map 10. I am pleased with the community of interest you call Legislative District 17. This is where I live, work, shop, and attend church. I feel like you successfully defined LD 17 as a community of interest. We are a group of people who have more in common than differences. Reading over the definition of community of interest referred to in the guidelines for redistricting, the theme of people of a common interest regarding political representation is one of the key aspects that is important to me and my family. I hear the words inclusive and less inclusive used regarding the legislative community. However, it seems the use of those words in practice has been to water down conservative ideals and expressions, especially in certain areas of our state. In addition, instead of, "thank you for your time."
Madam Chair, I do believe that our transcripters asked for a five-minute break, if that is okay. Five-minute break. It is now 11:44. We will come back at 11:48.
If you want to speak.
If you want to speak, you'll have to stay. Otherwise, you'll, you'll be rewinded again to come back in.
I'll stop. Haven't heard your name. Oh, okay. All right. If you have not heard your name, have not called you yet.
I haven't heard any names. My card is still active. I'm trying to understand your system. I came down to 106.
The next 10 speakers, if you'll line up behind me accordingly. Susan Kelly, Angie Dvorsky, Dean Chaucer, or Tracy, Eileen Boyd, Shelley Kice, Matthew Boyd, John McMurray, McMurphy, Bonnie Heidler, Joanna Hurst, Margaret Lacy, Patricia Melshi.
And before the next speaker gets started, for anybody who wasn't in the room before, we're asking if you have already spoken to please leave. If you're not planning to speak, please leave so we can allow more people who want to speak to come into the room. Thank you guys so much.
Hi, I'm Susan Kelly. I have lived in Pima County for over 21 years, combined a couple trips outside the state in various locations, from Tancaverty all the way now up to Morana, but never in Tucson. And that's always been a choice of mine. My neighbors have always been a great mix of conservatives and liberals, and I love that part about this area and specifically connected by lifestyle. Living downtown, Living downtown is a different lifestyle than living in a suburban or urban area. As a longtime resident of Pima County in the Tucson-Marana area, I want to support the southern Arizona portion of the LD map 10.0. LD 17 combines the communities that I spend time in. I still have friends on the far east side in Tancavertie, and I talk to them all the time. Specifically Saddle Brook and Saddle Brook Ranch have more in common with us in Oro Valley and Marana than they do with northern Pinal and Navajo County. Their community is closer to Oro Valley and Marana than the very rural areas north of them. Just like parts of Marana, communities of the Tancavertie Valley live in a suburban lifestyle. I remember once driving on the road, Tancavertie, out to my house in 49ers and seeing the legs of an ostrich in front of me. Luckily, we saw them in the headlights and we didn't hit the ostrich. That can't happen in downtown city of Tucson. So I really do support the LD 17 map the way we have it. I think it would be really strong. Thank you.
My name is Angie Jakowski. I'm speaking to support the proposed I-19 corridor LD 0055 map. I want to tell you about my community of interest. I have lived in Green Valley for over eight years. My time is spent in Green Valley and Saharita, where I do most of my shopping, eating, and socializing. These two towns also share a chamber of commerce. I have worked in Saharita and southern Tucson. The San Javier mission is the jewel of I-19, and the reservation should be included with Tucson, where many tribal members live. Before COVID, I tutored in Rio Rico. It is a pleasure to take a drive to Madeira Canyon, Tubac, Aravaca, and Nogales. I-19 is the artery that connects my community and its heart. It should not be used to separate those of us who live in this beautiful valley. There are major mountains ranges to the east that would make a much better boundary. Those of us who live along I-19 care many of the same interests and are a diverse group. This district needs to remain competitive to reflect this. I am urging you to follow the rules voted by the Arizona's in Proposition 106. We need maps that comply with the Voting Rights Act, have sensible borders, take geographical features into account, and are competitive. Arizona is changing, and our maps need to reflect the changes and have many minority-majority districts to include our diversity. Thank you.
Morning. Thanks very much, commissioners, for the work that you're doing. I can't even imagine the amount of data that you have to wade through. My name is Dean Chaucer, and my wife Carolyn and I have lived in Green Valley for about 11 years. As you probably know, Interstate 19 runs right through the middle of Green Valley, and our community is closely tied to Sawitah, Quail Creek, and Tucson. I consider the communities along the I-19 corridor communities of interest because we are interdependent. We shop, dine, attend church, seek medical assistance in Green Valley and Sawitah, and visit friends in Quail Creek. We often come to Tucson for doctor's appointments and for shopping and dining. Our weekly activities take us up and down I-19 corridor, and I feel these communities should not be separated by political boundaries. Santa Rita Mountain Range is a natural geographic barrier to the east of us and should be used as a boundary. Therefore, I support the Legislative District LD 0055, which is D-21 map, and the Congressional District D-7 map. Thanks very much.
Good, good morning. I'm Helen Boyd. I'm a 50-year Arizonan and a resident currently of Green Valley, and I wish to first express my great disappointment that you seem to have bent over backwards to accommodate the notion that Republicans are a community of interest that needs protection, despite the fact that the constitutional amendment underlying this commission was set up to end partisan gerrymandering, which weakens democracy. This map 10.0, being currently favored, is bending over backwards to create a Republican majority in Pima County, creating safe districts instead of competitive ones. Besides this, personally, I want people who will represent my area, which is the entirety of Green Valley, Quail Creek, and Sawarita. This map splits each community apart and pairs us with districts east of the Santa Ritas who have nothing in common with us. Map LD 0055 would be a better choice towards that end. Stop bending over backwards, please, to accommodate certain segments while turning your back on so many others. Thank you.
Good morning. Shelley Kice, Chairman of the Pima County GOP. Ladies and gentlemen, there are lies, there are damned lies, and there are political lies. This is a political process that we're involved in right now, as evidenced by your selection. You, our commissioners, were selected based on your political affiliation. A map is a product, ladies and gentlemen, and products are generally not liked by everyone, and this one will be no different. The four meetings in Tucson should have demonstrated discontent with the 2010 gerrymandering your predecessors did. We have had, heard many accusations today against Republican legislators, the Pima GOP, and our business community. But isn't it interesting that we've stopped the flow of speakers to allow tribal leaders, state senators, boards of supervisors, and elected county officials to provide you with maps, present you with their statements publicly, and yet we attempt to slanderize that or who we don't agree with? One speaker indicated that our Native Americans no longer have to stay on the reservation. So then why are we placing so much emphasis on this? Because it is legally required. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Matthew Boyd, and thank you for being here and all the work that you've done. I mean, oh my, I've been volunteered before, and I know what it takes. Thank you so much for being here. I am submitting this letter to let you know, as a 50-year resident of Arizona, I was so proud and hopeful when we voters passed Proposition 106 in 2000. When its provisions became part of the Arizona Constitution, gerrymandering was guaranteed to become a thing of the past. But I fear I may be wrong in seeing your behavior in embracing this map 10.0, which splits so many communities. My beloved Green Valley, Quail Creek, and Sawarita, where so many of my friends live, even Indian reservations, and pairing that with areas east of the Santa Ritas with nothing in common with us. You're not following the clear and implicit instructions set out in the proposition. It needs to be a geographically compact, contiguous, and must respect communities of interest, and it must be competitive. This map fails to do so. You have acted as if holding common political beliefs is enough to meet the criterion of community of interest, even if it breaks up the obvious commonalities. I ask you to look at map LD 0055. I have every reason to believe you wish to comply with this and do a good job. So please rethink what you've been doing.
Good morning. I'm John Murphy. This comment is in support of map 0055. After living in Green Valley for six years, it's clear the community of interest extends along the I-19 corridor, which several previous speakers have discussed. The corridor from just south of this junction with I-10 to Nogales includes Sawarita, Quail Creek, Green Valley, Amado, Rio Rico, and Nogales. All are connected by the interstate. Residents in this area tend to shop, go to church, school, and recreating in this corridor. Finding the community along the north-south axis, so that the eastern edge is in District 17, the western edge is in District 21, is a mistake. Keeping the community together in a single district is important. This district is facing some potentially severe environmental issues and will require good representation by whichever party has the representation in the legislature. Uh, thank you.
Welcome back to Tucson. Hi, my name is Bonnie Heidler, and I live on the far east side of Tucson and near Tancavertie. And my community of interest is District 17. My current district, District 10, is a fair and competitive district. Both Republicans and Democrats have won this district over the past 10 years. It is a compact district, whereas District 17 is a packed district and not compact and contiguous to the extent practicable, which is one of the stated goals in the Arizona Constitution. It is made up of selected Republican-leaning suburbs from opposite ends of the Tucson area that are separated by a mountain range and a long drive. Today, I can drive through my district without going around a mountain or taking almost an hour to get to the north end of my district or having to drive through four other districts to get to the other end of my district. District 17 does not represent communities of interest to the extent practicable. Residents of Tancavertie and Valley and Vanveil have very little to do with distant suburbs of Marana and Oro Valley and have much closer ties to eastern and midtown district. Yeah, Tucson. District 17 was designed by Republicans to create a safe Republican district. This violates the constitutional requirement to the extent practicable competitive districts should be favored where to do so would create no significant detriment to the other goals. Commissioner Luna proposed an alternative for District 17, and I hope you consider that one. Thank you.
Hello, thank you for being here and allowing us to speak. My name is Julianne Hirst. I'm a native Tucsonan. I've lived here over 66 years. The way the proposed map 10.0 cherry picks areas of Tucson, instead of following streets and natural boundaries, is an obvious attempt to break up communities of interest. I'm on the board of the Peter Howell Neighborhood Association, and my neighborhood would be split in half, which might seem like a small thing. But if my neighborhood has issues requiring our legislators' attention, because the neighborhood would be broken up, the issues would require two legislators. Despite the, despite the two halves of our newly split neighborhood having common issues, if the Neighborhood Association wanted to invite a legislator to speak, we'd have to invite two. I'm sure this isn't the only place that this is happening. LD 18 wanders all over. The southern border on Speedway, then on Fifth, then on Speedway again, then Broadway, then takes a crazy route to Escalante, back up to Speedway, and that's just the southern part. It looks like a creature with no rhyme or reason to its borders, with bites taken out of it here and there. Midtown Tucson is lumped with parts of Arizona that have nothing in common with it. We need compact, sensible, fair, and competitive maps. Thank you very much.
I, I have a quick follow-up question. What specific neighborhood association was split up?
Peter Howell Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Margaret Lacy. I'm a native Tucsonan. I understand the redistricting process is a monumental task, and I appreciate your volunteering to accomplish this. I must, however, talk about your responsibility to create competitive districts. It is clear this task was totally ignored in the current legislative district map. Out of 20 districts, only five are even remotely competitive. When I learned about redistricting about 10 years ago, I did not understand the importance of competitive districts. I figured if the districts were evenly divided between parties, that things would work. However, in the last 20-plus years, politics has become more and more polarized. If a district is overwhelmingly Republican or Democrat, the real battle for the seat happens during the primary election. That is when fewer voters participate, and the extremists have the best chance of winning. They can go on to win easily in the general election. Having safe districts will discourage moderation and bipartisanship. It also increases participation, or either it decreases participation in the electoral process and increases apathy among moderate and independent voters who feel their voice is never heard.
Patricia Mase. I agree with Allison Jones and Mr. Geddes and other previous speakers. I lived in Oracle when I first moved to Arizona 38 years ago, just before Saddle Brook and Sun City-Vistoso were started. Isn't it interesting that Oracle Road has been widened from McGee North with numerous traffic lights since then for all these people who rarely come into Tucson, while road improvements north and east are still basically the same as 38 years ago? Do these residents go around to Stafford or over Reddington Road to get to Tancavertie? Or do they come through Tucson? Most of these southern Arizona maps are seriously partisan, and your work is disgraceful and disgusting. Your work is seriously disregards redistricting rules. And as long as I have time, I'm sure in Phoenix you had bigger venues where people were not excluded. Your work is disgraceful.
Please. We, we, excuse me, can we please give every speaker respect? Thank you.
We will take it back over to Maryville at this time.
Thank you, Michelle. Our next speakers are.
I'm sorry, Marie.
Marie, can you hold on?
Sorry, just one announcement here in Tucson. If you have already spoken, if you could please leave so we can get more people into the room, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. In Maryville, our next speakers are Michael, Michael Olivares, Lisa Sun, Crystal Carrillo, Juana Elizarras, Rosarco Lechuga, Elinda Calderon Ivara, Maria Rojas, and Tega Maito. And, excuse me, and one final, Rafael Illy.
Hi, good afternoon. I've spoken before on the legislative districts advocating for a fifth majority-minority Latino district, or minority-majority, I should say. Today, I want to speak about Congressional District 1. I have heard in previous hearings that a lot of people are not okay with the way that Congressional District 1 dives down into central and east Phoenix. So I really want to make a recommendation that there should be a district created that centers around east and central Phoenix, given that north of the 101 is very different, as well as the west side and the south side of Phoenix. And so I want to advocate for a congressional district that encompasses the values of central and east Phoenix. And I also wanted to say overall, in regards to competitive districts, you know, I agree with a lot of people when they say that there is clearly some sort of favoritism when we look at the overall legislative maps. You know, as we can see, one party has more safe districts than the other. I really just want to stress that these maps should be drawn in a way that is fair. So if there can be something done to make the overall legislative district more competitive, I think that would benefit everybody. Thank you. Oh, and my name is Michael Olivares.
My name is Lisa Sun, and I'm here in West Valley, District 19, Legislative District 19. On the draft map, it is now LD 22. If you look at the draft map of LD 22, if you look at the congressional map, we are divided up to, up to possibly five congressional districts. How is that possible? We only have seven congressional districts. To have one legislative district overlapping possibly four to five is clearly a sign of gerrymandering, therefore unconstitutional. I can't imagine how this final draft map was even possible. And to not see the obvious of gerrymandering, here's Exhibit 1. If we go into LD 22, you can see that we have two towns surrounding by Phoenix, Avondale and Tolleson. The population of Tolleson is roughly 7,000. La población de Tolleson es aproximadamente 7,000, lo cual está en juego. Avondale actualmente, aproximadamente alrededor de 85,000. Ahora está siendo dividido por la I-10. Entendemos la lucha con la división. Así que gracias por su tiempo.
Hola, comisiones y asistentes. Mi nombre es Crystal Carrillo, y soy residente del actual Distrito Legislativo 30 y el Distrito Congresional 7. Vivo entre la 19ª Avenida y la 17ª Freeway, entre Camelback y la escuela Indian. El vecindario Westwood es un horno que se calentó con muchos diferentes edades, profesiones, religiones, etnias y tradiciones. También vivo justo por la calle de la escuela de la escuela Elhambro en el distrito de Elhambro. Somos un vecindario de minoría y mayoría con muchos latinos como yo, que han elegido esta área para acostarse. Estoy agradecida de que la comisión haya tomado en cuenta comunidades de interés y me ha mantenido en un distrito donde eso es relevante. Sin embargo, noté que me pongo en el distrito congresional 1 que actualmente se extiende hasta Scottsdale, Paradise Valley y Fountain Hills, todas áreas que son vastamente diferentes de donde vivo en la Avenida 23ª y Camelback. ¿Cómo puede Paradise Valley y Scottsdale, los códigos ZIP con la mayor riqueza en el estado, entender los problemas que mi vecindario enfrenta? Mi pequeña área será oído por los áreas norte y noreste, haciendo que sea virtualmente imposible elegir a un congresista que pueda atacar nuestros problemas. La coalición latino ha redactado mapas que he tenido la oportunidad de mirar, y siento que mejor representa a mi comunidad. Le pido que considere los mapas de no partidistas de la coalición latino cuando hagan sus elecciones finales. Gracias por su tiempo.
Si pueden escucharme en Maryvale, tengo una pregunta de seguimiento si no te importa. Vamos a tomar un mirar muy serio de los mapas que la coalición latino ha presentado esta semana, y estamos profundamente agradecidas de que tomen el tiempo de realmente mapar todo el estado. requiere una análisis muy pensado de lo que están pidiendo para sus propias comunidades. No todo el tiempo, los correctos números de personas viven donde necesitamos que vengan. ¿Dirían que las comunidades de minoría en estas áreas tienen muy similares intereses políticos? Así que, por ejemplo, sabemos que hay bolsas de afroestadounidenses viviendo, usted sabe, junto a las comunidades latino. ¿Cuán similares, cuánto en común sienten estas comunidades en sus necesidades políticas?
Creo que son más similares que, como mencioné antes, una comunidad como Paradise Valley o Scottsdale. Así que tendría más en común con una comunidad indígena, una comunidad negra, y obviamente, una comunidad latina.
Muchas gracias.
Hola, buenos días. Mi nombre es Juana Elizarrás, y soy residente del distrito 26, Glendale.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Juana, y soy residente del distrito propuesto 26 en Glendale.
Gracias por dar la oportunidad de hablar y expresar las necesidades de nuestra comunidad.
Gracias por darme la oportunidad de hablar y hablar sobre las necesidades de mi comunidad.
Las necesidades de la comunidad son la educación, el medio ambiente, la vivienda, la seguridad, entre algunos otros.
Bien, las necesidades de nuestra comunidad son nuestra educación, nuestra bienestar, nuestra vivienda, seguridad y nuestra seguridad.
Algunas de las cosas que yo he mirado más necesidad es la transportación pública.
Una de las cosas que he visto que tiene más necesidad es el transporte público.
Necesita lugares donde sentarse.
Necesitamos lugares donde sentarnos.
Sombras.
Cabezas.
Seguridad con el crimen.
Seguridad con los crímenes.
Basureros.
Trasquines.
Iluminación.
Iluminación.
Y la economía debería estar distribuida de una mejor manera.
La economía necesita ser distribuida de una mejor manera.
Ahora, con lo de la pandemia.
Y ahora con la pandemia.
Las viviendas subieron mucho.
La vivienda realmente ha aumentado.
Los saldos no subieron nada.
Y los saldos no han aumentado en absoluto.
Ahora con la redistribución, me gustaría proponer que se abriera un quinto distrito que represente a la comunidad.
Ahora con la redistribución, me gustaría que un distrito más se abriera para representar a la comunidad.
Y represente a todas las familias.
Y represente a todas las familias.
Y sobre todo que los representantes sean honestos.
Y en general, para que los representantes sean honestos.
Claros.
Claros.
Y una gran responsabilidad con la comunidad.
Y tener una gran responsabilidad con la comunidad.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Hola, mi nombre es Elinda Calderón. Vivo cerca de la 27ª Avenida en Van Buren, en Phoenix, Arizona, durante los últimos 13 años. Durante la pandemia, estaba frustrada por la falta de recursos en mi comunidad. Las familias siguen sin salida de guerra y están luchando por obtener el descanso de COVID. Muchas familias no pueden soportar mantener las luces a luz debido a los altos costos de la electricidad y los presupuestos que no paran ni empiezan a subir. Las personas sin hogar enferman y se convierten en drogas, lo cual es un gran problema en mi comunidad. El crimen es que los niños desesperados no han sido secuestrados. Y el año pasado, dispararon a un amigo que vive aquí en Van Buren y la 31ª Avenida. Solo había un oficial en mi área, y tardó dos horas en llegar a reportar. Necesitamos más policías y políticos que no ignoran nuestra comunidad. Muchos tienen miedo de hablar, pero no nos detendremos. O necesitamos que el distrito ayuden a nuestras comunidades a tener voz de lucha y asegurar que nuestras preocupaciones estén en el camino en el futuro. Me gustaría también pedir más distritos competitivos en otras áreas de la comunidad afectada. Muchas gracias. Buena noche.
Gracias.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Rosario Lechuga. Vivo en el área de Maryvale.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Rosario Lechuga. Vivo en el área de Maryvale.
Agradezco la oportunidad que se me da de dirigirme a ustedes.
Y aprecio la oportunidad que me han dado para que me pueda dedicar a ustedes.
Nuestro distrito necesita mucho de seguridad pública.
Nuestro distrito necesita mucha seguridad pública.
Estamos en una gran necesidad de fondos para nuestra educación pública.
Estamos en una gran necesidad de fondos para nuestra educación pública.
Por falta de recursos, muchos excelentes maestros han optado por irse a otros estados.
Debido a la falta de recursos, muchos excelentes maestros han optado por irse a otros estados.
Afectando nuestros distritos escolares y nuestro nivel académico ha caído.
Afectando nuestro distrito escolar y nuestro nivel académico ha caído.
Padres de familia han optado por enviar a sus hijos a Chapter School en lugar de nuestras escuelas públicas, y eso afecta mucho.
Muchos padres han optado por enviar a sus hijos a escuelas más pequeñas en lugar de nuestras escuelas públicas, y eso afecta mucho.
Los fondos escolares van hacia... Los fondos escolares que van hacia nuestro distrito.
Y los fondos para nuestras escuelas que van a nuestros distritos.
Pienso que el tener un quinto distrito legislativo mayoritario latino.
Y creo que al tener un distrito legislativo mayoritario latino para nuestra mayoría de latinos.
Nuestra comunidad estaría mejor.
Nuestra comunidad estaría mejor.
No estaríamos en un distrito donde nuestras voces serían diluidas.
No estaríamos en un distrito donde nuestras voces no se escuchen.
Nuestra comunidad latina ha crecido mucho, y necesitamos de representantes que muestran interés en nuestra comunidad.
Nuestra comunidad latina ha crecido mucho, por lo tanto, necesitamos representantes que muestren interés en nuestra comunidad.
Yo opino que nuestro estado necesita de distritos competitivos.
Creo que nuestro estado necesita de distritos competitivos.
Así quien se postule para estos cargos conocerá las necesidades que existen en nuestros distritos.
Por lo tanto, quien sea parte de nuestro distrito podrá conocer y familiarizarse con las necesidades existentes en nuestros distritos.
Gracias.
Hola, buenas noches, buenas tardes, comisiones. Soy Tega Maído, y soy residente de Tempe. No pude hacer las audiencias en Scottsdale y Mesa. Pero, con eso dicho, estoy en el respaldo del mapa LD 0061. Si alguien pudiera presentar ese mapa, eso sería muy apreciado. Y apoyo los comentarios de las personas que vinieron a esas audiencias en el respaldo de ese mapa para el Este Valley. No voy a repetir esos comentarios. Pero la razón por la que estoy presentando este mapa LD 0061 es porque hay otros distritos en ese mapa que son bastante buenos y me gustaría que consideraran. Primero de todo, la orientación de D2 se mantiene, manteniendo la pendiente y manteniendo la equilibrio de la población. D4 también se limpió mejor. Remueve las partes de Scottsdale que están en él, mientras que sigue manteniendo D4 competitivo. Así que por favor, aprecio si hacen eso. En cuanto a D1, la representación hispana de D1 también se ha aumentado. Y luego, pasando a la Valle del Este. Idealmente, creo que sería genial si creas un distrito latino mayoritario hispano. Pero si no lo haces, lo importante es tener representación justa y no sobrepasar. Bien, está bien, eso es.
Hola, soy Ray Illy. La versión 9 de los mapas de trabajo LD es terrible. Comunidades de interés similares están separadas. Por favor, no las uses. Las versiones 10 son buenas para Arizona sur, satisfiriendo los requisitos legales, representando bien las comunidades de interés. Distritos competitivos partidistas no son necesarios porque las comunidades de interés pueden y deben mantenerse juntas. Distritos competitivos breed corrupción de personas con dinero que pueden girar elecciones de una forma o la otra si está cerca de 50-50, demócrata versus republicano. Mantén Marana, Oro Valley, Tanco Verde y Valle juntos en LD 17. Mantén LD 19 intacto con dos excepciones. Por favor, añade la área por ruta 83 del estado, sur de la I-10, a LD 19. Esta comunidad rural pertenece a las demás en LD 19. Por favor, move la área de I-19 a LD 21. Es una comunidad artística en el interestado que no coincide con los intereses de las otras comunidades rurales en LD 19. Geografía y facilidad de viaje importan poco. Tener intereses similares representados en el mismo distrito es todo lo que importa. Todavía hay problemas en CD 6 y CD 7. Dividir Tucson en dos tiene el efecto injusto de poner grandes poblaciones en cada distrito. Así que solo Tucson, minorías y áreas nativas americanas son representadas. Comunidades suburbanas y rurales no son representadas. Esto se hace poniendolas en los mismos distritos con minorías urbanas y nativas americanas que las superan. Tucson, con comunidades nativas y hispanas como South Tucson y Yuma, tiene menos de 800,000 personas, menos de una CD. Hoy estas comunidades controlan dos CDs y obtienen doble representación. Es lógico y justo mantener estas comunidades de like minoría protegidas en una CD.
Y tengo una última llamada para María Rojas. Y eso concluye los oradores en Maryvale. Gracias. De vuelta a Tucson.
Los próximos 10 oradores se alinean de acuerdo conmigo. Carol Schloff, María Hidalgo, Vicky Ghee, Lawrence Wagner, Simpson Hyatt, Linda Dugan, Mike Weingard, Bernie Danups... Lo siento si he perdido la pronunciación de tu nombre. Larry Bodine, Leslie Hunter, Karen Wilkinson.
Y Michelle, ¿podemos tener el intérprete presentarse? Sí, lo siento.
Buenas tardes. Soy Eric Cruz, el intérprete español. En caso de que alguien quiera escuchar, voy a estar en la parte de atrás para poder repartir el rato auditivo. Mi nombre es Eric Cruz, el intérprete español. Si alguien necesita interpretación, estaré en la parte trasera para poder proporcionar los headphones para quien necesite. Gracias.
Gracias.
Hola, mi nombre es Carol Schloff, y soy organizadora de comunidad para alrededor de 50 voluntarios en el lado occidental y en los pueblos de las montañas de Tucson. Estamos en una área que se refiere a LD 16, Tucson Estates, en Tucson, Arizona, donde somos un área urbanamente orientada, densamente poblada, con fuertes vínculos con la ciudad de Tucson. Nuestra comunidad de interés es Tucson. Tucson enriquece nuestra comunidad. Embracamos los artes, la comida y la cultura. Pero más importante, nuestra comunidad de interés enriquece Tucson con nuestros proyectos de servicio de comunidad y su participación. LD 16 no representa en ninguna forma a nuestra comunidad de interés de Tucson. LD 16 es principalmente rural y suburbano en el extremo occidental, con su base de poder y población en los suburbios de Goodyear y Buckeye, lejos de mi hogar en Tucson. Además, nuestros pueblos de la playa de Tucson del este están isolados del resto de LD 16 por 20,000 acres de Parque Mountain de Tucson y el Parque Nacional de Saguaro. Has dividido nuestra comunidad de Tucson, y en hacerlo, has sistematicamente desenfrantado la mayoría de los votantes de LD 16 de Tucson. Has arruinado nuestra voz y nuestra visión por la ciudad que amamos. Le pido que devuelvas nuestros pueblos de Tucson isolados a la metro de Tucson. Es lo correcto a hacer. Es donde vivimos y es donde pertenecemos. Gracias.
Buenas tardes, comisiones. Mi nombre es María Hidalgo. Y recientemente nos mudamos a Tucson, Arizona, habiendo vivido en dos otros estados y habido votar en dos otros estados. Y no puede imaginarse mi sorpresa cuando escuché sobre el IRC. No tenía idea de qué era. El estándar de la forma en que los distritos son dibujados. Quitar la influencia política de esto y realmente dejar que los votantes decidan cómo los distritos son dibujados. Así que tomé una clase, Civics 101. Estaba tan emocionada por esto, y ahora mi balón se ha despeinado. Vi el mapa para LD 17, y me pregunté, ¿cómo puede Tanco Verde y Valle, que está a más de un milla de Saddle Brook y Marana, tener algo en común? No, no mencionar que están a más de un hora de los demás en una rama completa. Y tristemente he llegado a saber que las influencias políticas han sido liberadas para crear un LD republicano aquí en el condado de Pima. El IRC no fue creado para este propósito. Fue para sacar la política de este proceso. Estoy exhausta de la retórica y comportamiento de extremistas que representan aquí en nuestro estado. Extremistas que han sido electos de distritos que no son competitivos. Competitividad es solo buena gobernanza. Competitividad golpea al extremismo. Por favor, aprobé el mapa de trabajo LD 9.0. Gracias por su tiempo y gracias por su servicio.
Última llamada para Vicky Ghee.
Buenas noches. Para que sepas, lo siento por interrumpir. Para que sepas, estamos teniendo seguridad que llame a personas fuera que no han respondido. Ha habido aproximadamente, este es el tercer uno hasta ahora. Si no están fuera, es porque no están aquí. No, no. La seguridad fuera llama los nombres de las personas que no están aquí. Están caminando por ahí llamando para asegurarse. Así que solo para que entiendas, que todos los que han sido llamados están o no están aquí, o están aquí y van a hablar. Gracias. Vaya.
Buenas noches. Creo que todavía son buenas noches. Mi nombre es Lawrence Wagner, y crecí en Tucson. Me fui de Tucson de la escuela secundaria. Mi esposa y yo volvimos a Tucson hace diez años hoy, después de una carrera de 30 años en el ejército marino y después de 17 años de vivir fuera. Hoy tomaré solo unos minutos de su tiempo y hablaré muy egoístamente sobre mi... Today, I'll take only a few minutes of your time and I'll talk very selfishly about my district, the district that you call District 17. I'm not the only resident in the area that finds a current District 17 in draft map 10.0 unacceptable and we're concerned about the entire process. We're concerned that the current District 17 map is drawn as a safe Republican district. We're concerned that the proposed district is neither compact nor contiguous, but made up of selected Republican-leaning suburbs from opposite ends of Tucson to create a safe Republican district. We're concerned that the Chair of the Independent Redistricting Commission has stated that she supports a safe Republican district in Pima County. We're also concerned to hear the Republican state senator, working with officials from Morana, has inserted a map drawn from an official of the local Republican Party into the IRC process. This hidden partisan action taints the entire process and specifically my district in 17. I ask that this commission discard the current tainted District 17 map and move to a more competitive district map. The District 17 map in draft map 9.0 would be very competitive as a district. I know that there are other more competitive maps that have been submitted to you and I would ask that you look at them. Thank you very much for your time.
My name is Hyatt Simpson and I've lived in Arizona for a total of 28 years, divided between Flagstaff and Tucson. My husband and I retired to Tucson in 2007 and our home is in the Tenca Verde Valley. We shop in Tucson, recreate in Tucson, eat out in Tucson, get our medical care in Tucson, and pay our water bills to Tucson. Needless to say, I'm against the proposed LD map that places our neighborhood in a gerrymandered, safe Republican District 17, a far cry from our current competitive District 10. I'm concerned that the commission seems to confuse the concept of competitive districts with the idea that each party deserves a certain number of safe districts. That confusion is demonstrated by a statement by the Chair of the IRC concerning proposed Tucson LD 17, that she is comfortable having a district that will ensure that right-of-center people will have some representation. Because of the obvious misunderstanding of the constitutional direction to create competitive districts where practicable, this commission has appeared to ignore competitiveness in favor of safe districts. Exhibit A is the current LD map, which contains only five competitive districts out of a total of 30, and none are in Tucson. So I urge the commission to take advantage of the remaining time they have to come up with a product that will better reflect the constitutional criteria that they swore to honor. It doesn't need to be perfect, just demonstrably consistent with the Constitution. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Dugan. I live in Broadmore, Broadway Village, a historic neighborhood in midtown Tucson. I have lived in Tucson for more than three years. I'm a retired public school teacher of 26 years. I'm involved in my community through various volunteer work. Today, I would like to express my concerns about the current LD District 21 map that shows a meandering area extending from central Tucson, where my neighborhood is located, all the way to the Mexican border where Nogales, Arizona is located. This is in direct contradiction to the redistribution goals spelled out in the Arizona Constitution, namely the compact and contiguous geographic area. It's not clear to me how District 21 can be determined geographically compact when midtown Tucson is fragmented into many different directions. For example, a neighborhood approximately a mile from my house is in a different district from me, but someone living in Nogales, Arizona, which is approximately 70 miles from my house, is in my District 21. I support the proposal made by Democratic Commissioner Lerner on her LD test map 9.0, which would keep the midtown areas coherent and consolidated, including my own neighborhood. In addition, I support her map for the LD District 17. I don't have time to go into that, but many other people have expressed their agreement too. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Weingarten and I thank you for this opportunity to address the commission. I live also in the Broadmore Broadway Village neighborhood, about one mile southeast of the campus of University of Arizona. I want to start by adding my voice to those who have expressed concern about the formation of LD 17, in particular, the apparent partisan influence and the expressed intent of creating a safe Republican district and the various violations of the constitutional goals that go with that. I think it's proven that LD map version 9.0 is a much better and practicable map that would resolve many of those issues. Having said all that, let me speak about my neighborhood because I feel that consequences of how LD 17 was created have impacted my neighborhood. We are a central Tucson neighborhood, part of midtown, and that's our community of interest. And the current map breaks up central neighborhoods in Tucson into three different LDs. And my neighborhood is now in District 21, which again goes down to Nogales and the Mexican border. That's not our community of interest. And I thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Bernie Stanis. I live in Oro Valley. I would like to speak here in support of map version 10.0 and also I support CD 0063. I'll just say, my family is a diverse community. I'm from Canada originally, now a US citizen. My wife is from Chile. She's Hispanic. Two of my children were born there. One was born here in the US. You will never draw a line through our family. We have diverse opinions. And so I admire the work that you're doing. But one thing I believe here is that the stress people have on having their community represented this way and that community is divisive and dangerous. I think, I don't have a problem with mixing communities, breaking them up, letting one group over here and one group over there. That's the way people learn how to work together. And as I say, I appreciate very much the work you're doing and thank you very much.
My name is Larry Bodine and I live in the proposed LD 17. And my community of interest is American democracy. I've been seeing the Pledge of Allegiance since I was in kindergarten. Now, the amount of corruption that I'm seeing in the redistricting process is shameful. Senator Vince Leach personally and secretly gerrymandered the new LD 17. He had the lines moved so that his residence was included in it and he would have a safe incumbent seat. Now, since the IRC is giving out personal favors, I would like to ask for one. And that would be, please delete LD 17 as a safe Republican district and follow the Constitution to make districts compact and competitive. Why should Republicans have a safe Republican district? They already dominate the legislature, the governorship, the Attorney General. LD 17 is designed to extend one-party rule. My ancestors fought in the Revolutionary War. My ancestors fought in the Civil War. My ancestors fought in World War II. Please adopt their spirit and create compact, sensible, fair, and competitive districts.
Hello, my name's Leslie Hunter. I appreciate the commission for seeking our input today. I'm a resident of Tucson since 1970. This city is delightfully diverse, but a unified population that supports arts, culture, education, the environment, citizen rights, and business. It's also highly democratic, with 40% registered Democrats, 31% independent, and 29% Republican. The 2011 redistricting process respected this distribution and still produced competitive boundaries that gave candidates a fair chance. Today, the current proposed map 10.0 is a different and disturbing picture. Districts have been radically changed. LD 17 and 21 do not follow the commission's own guidelines. 17 is not compact or a COI. 21 is not competitive. And the vote spread is 10 points, which is way beyond your allowable deviation of five points. The IRC is supposed to be nonpartisan, but this map is clearly a political manipulation. You have even acknowledged that the purpose is to create a new, safe Republican district. I call this gerrymandering. You have asked for community input, so I want to register my objection to the LD 17 and 21 districts. A previous map version 9.0 by Commissioner Lerner represents Tucson more accurately and shows that districts can be truly competitive. I ask that you seriously consider. Thank you.
My name is Karen Wilkinson and I'm a resident of what is now, I'm in the foothills and I'm a resident of what is now Legislative District 9. The legislative district maps in Pima County, as currently drawn, create three safe districts for Democrats and three safe for Republicans. These safe districts aren't compact, nor do they represent communities of interest. I was very sad to learn that recently a state senator influenced officials to formulate District 17 so that he is virtually sure to be reelected. I'm concerned about Legislative District 17, which doesn't comply with redistricting requirements. By circling from Oro Valley to Vale in order to favor one party, Legislative District 17 connects disparate communities that have little to do with each other. I'm concerned that in District 18, the foothills have little, has little in common with the Davis-Monthan Air Base Corridor, but much more in common with the Tenca Verde area. In coming up with the new map, I urge you to use draft map Legislative District 0065 that connects the foothills and Tenca Verde areas, which are true communities of interest. Thanks for your work.
The next 10 speakers, and if you'll line up behind me accordingly. Diane Coscarelli, Leslie Stahl, William Beard, Karen Essif, Caleb Hader, Barbara Tellman, Catherine Weasel. I'm sorry, I can't pronounce the first name. It's V-S-P-I-K-E-V, V Spike Peterson, CJ Jones, Frank Bergen. The 60th speaker is Diane Coscarelli.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your public service. I am Diane Coscarelli. I live in the Catalina foothills and speak for myself and my family, who represent a full range of voters, including independents. The LDs in Pima County have been pinwheeled into six safe districts. There are no competitive districts, even though about one-third of Pima County voters are independent. This leaves few choices for independent and moderate voters. These pinwheeled districts are the ripple effect of LD 17, which is not compact, contiguous, or competitive, and was created for explicit partisan purposes. Recently, I was shocked to learn that State Senator Leach maneuvered with officials in having LD 17 structured in his favor. This is most disturbing. LD 17 can be fixed. I urge you to draw LD 17 to include the compact, contiguous, and competitive areas as shown on map LD 9.0. And failing that, I urge you to adjust LD 18 to replace the Davis-Monthan Corridor with the Tenca Verde area to the east. My LD 18 communities...
Hello, my name is Leslie Stahl and I've been a resident of Arizona since 2011. I appreciate the work that you are doing and taking time to listen to our concerns. I have significant concerns regarding the LD 10 map and the legislative districts in the metro Tucson area. The IRC has summarily adopted to resemble a gerrymandered puzzle rather than a district that honors many of the criteria I believe are constitutionally mandated, such as communities of interest contiguous in compact districts and providing for competitive elections. Specifically, I have concerns with regard to the Tucson Estates Navarri Valley areas and the Tonodome Nation. These are all communities of interest located in the metro Tucson area. Based on the 10 map, these communities have been drawn out of the Tucson area and gerrymandered into four legislative districts as far flung as Yuma and Goodyear. It appears the LD 10 map exiled these communities from their Tucson community for purely political purposes. These people live here, shop here, work here, socialize here, and have established businesses here, such as the two casinos in the metropolitan Tucson area. Additionally, these new districts on the LD 10 map stand to disenfranchise or at least marginalize these voters. Do you honestly believe a representative from Yuma will consider these people in three or four precincts as important constituents? My ask today is the IRC use the LD 0055 map previously submitted. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Beard and I'm a resident of the city of Tucson and a fourth-generation Tucsonian. I support the LD 10 draft map, especially where it concerns the Southern Arizona districts. They do represent the various communities of interest and will serve Southern Arizona well in the coming decade. I would also bring to your attention a congressional map, CD 0063. This map contains many areas that have been inside the current southeast Arizona district and keeps them together. It includes Davis-Monthan, Rita Ranch, Corona Day Tucson, Sarita, and Green Valley inside that southeast Arizona congressional district, where they've been for many decades. It also takes into consideration the comments from Mayor Romero to include more of the city of Tucson inside the southwest side district. It utilizes the Rita River to the north and the Pantano Creek along the east side of Tucson to separate these districts. It's a natural separation and would make a logical choice to define the two areas. Drawing lines on a map is inherently divisive. Rich, poor, white, black, brown, or plaid, you will be separating people when you place a line on a map. I have a question for a lot of the commenters today about wanting more fair and competitive districts. Facts are stubborn things. And if you use the same data that the IRC mapping team uses for competitiveness and you remove the VRA-compliant districts from the overall state population, you are left with an area that skews a lot more red. Thank you for your time.
Good day. First, thank you to the committee and for all your hard work. My name is Erinisa. My wife and I have lived in Arizona most of our lives and she and I have resided and raised our children in Morana for the past 16 years. I'm a precinct committee member in current District LD 11, soon to be LD 17. I'm afraid that I need to strongly object to map 10.0. Plan for this LD 17 in this map is neither compact, contiguous, competitive, nor does it represent the best result for communities of interest. The COIs include northern Pima County places of Morana, Oro Valley, Caso Adobis, Rito, and the Catalina foothills. These places are all urban suburban and share water resources and development concerns as well as transportation corridors, I-10, Oracle Road, and Tangerine. LD 17 in draft map 9.0 does a much better job and does not violate the criteria which are supposed to be met. In map 9.0, LD 17 represents a rectangle, is compact, yet still continues to include a few sparsely populated places in Pima County that lie east of the Catalina Mountains. So it is compact, contiguous, and competitive, and contains better representation of communities of interest. Thank you.
Madam Chair Commissioners, good morning. Thank you for being here. My name is Caleb Hader. I live in northeast Tucson in the Tenca Verde Valley. And I'm here to speak about two proposed districts, Congressional District 6 and Legislative District 11. districts, Congressional District 6 and Legislative District 17. LD 17 under version 10.0 doesn't meet the requirements of compactness, communities of interest, or competitiveness. I am not part of a community of interest with Vale or Morana. I don't eat, recreate, shop, or work in those areas. And Tancaverty is not as rule as some believe. Many of my neighbors shop, eat, recreate, and worship in the city of Tucson. LD 17 also connects two distant areas via an impassable mountain range, and it is impossible to get from one end of the district to the other without passing through another district. And LD 17 is also not competitive. Competitiveness doesn't mean that the overall distribution of the legislature is fair. Competitiveness means that each district on its own merits is fair. The proposed district in draft map version 9 is much more competitive in addition to being more compact and respectful of communities of interest. Much the same applies to CD 6. I don't have anything to do with southern Graham and Greenlee Counties, and I only pass through Pinot County when I travel to Phoenix. The proposed CD 6 in map version 1 is much more compact and contiguous. I ask the Commission to change the proposed LD 17 to the version proposed in version 9 and CD 6 to the version proposed in version 1. Thank you.
I'm Barbara Tellman. I'm going to skip over what I was going to talk about, the bogus nature of using communities of interest to justify LD 17. In contrast, you ignored genuine communities of interest, and I'm submitting a list of those communities that I could identify, mostly in southern Arizona. I've been the one who authored map LD 0055, and it had a very limited purpose, and that was to unite five specific communities of interest within themselves and with the city of Tucson where they belong. Several leads have already been discussed: the Odam Nation, the Yaki Tribe, Avra Valley, and Green Valley. And only one that I will talk about right now is where LD 16 comes down into downtown Tucson. LD 16 actually comes within an easy bike ride of Tucson City Hall, and yet, the people who live there will be represented by someone from a place like Buckeye many, many miles away. So map 0055 was not intended as a perfect map, which just intended very limitedly to deal with these five communities of interest, and I hope that you will proceed, take my list, and continue to work with the rest of the communities of interest that are missing.
Hi, my name is Catherine Weasel. I'm a registered voter for Pima County. I've resided in Pima County since 1997. I support the congressional draft map of 6.0. I also like the latest draft map of 10.0. I personally feel that after 10 years, a minimum representation in Pima County that is necessary for changes. I would like to thank Mayor Romero for the suggestion of keeping the city of Tucson, Downtown, UofA, and South Tucson all together in a continuous cluster. These areas are highly populated, have the public transportation needed for urban areas. City of Tucson, Downtown, UofA, and South Tucson are their own urban communities. Representation for urban living is strongly displayed in these areas. Having experienced urban and rural living in Pima County, I can assure you that the city of Tucson is extremely different than the rest of Pima County. Rural living is a way of life that coexists within Pima County with all the connecting counties surrounding the area, is why people come to Arizona. We like our open spaces, our way of life, our protection, our parks and wildlife. People who live urban want urban. People who live rural want rural. It's as simple as that. It's a way of differences existing together. I would like to thank the Board for the hard work and dedication of this process, and a kudos to Erica for 100% participation in all these testimonies.
I am V Spike Peterson, for 31 years, a Tucson resident and professor of political science at the University of Arizona. Not surprisingly, I'm someone who takes very seriously the privilege and responsibilities of US citizenship. I am deeply committed to and actively participate in politics in hopes of ensuring that the democratic principles, small d, are not further undermined by partisan bias. My comments today focus on a single but absolutely crucial point: competitive districts are a cornerstone of democracy, and the Arizona State Constitution, the US Constitution, and the Voting Act's right legally establish guidelines that prohibit partisan gerrymandering. We know that heavily inclusive participation in districts discourages democratic, especially inclusive, participation. My single and emphatic request today is that the IRC abide by legislative guidelines, which many argue, and I believe persuasively, are violated by the current text. No one can doubt that the foundations of our democracy are currently threatened, and we know that heavily partisan districts foster the election of extremist candidates. You have an opportunity, indeed an obligation, to weaken the probability of that outcome by ensuring competitive districts. Thank you.
My name is CJ Jones. I've lived in Tucson for the last 20 years or so. I'm a registered professional engineer. Throughout my career, I've worked for many different government agencies. I've also been very politically active essentially all of my life, and I believe in competitive districts. I think that they are good for democracy in that they get voters engaged in the political process. Competitive districts also lessen the chances of extremist candidates being elected, and I think that is something that's very important here in Arizona. So with that in mind, I would like to request that District 17 include the compact, contiguous, and competitive area of Marina to the foothills, including Oro Valley and Casas Adoblas. It should also leave in, it should leave out Vale, the Houghton Corridor, and Tancaverty and the eastern, leave them into the eastern legislative districts. In CD 7, I would like to request that the three contiguous communities of interest, Downtown LA, the University of Arizona, and the Fourth Avenue, remain in CD 7. And I request that CD 7 include areas south of Broadway so that the Latinos maintain voting strength in their communities of interest. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Frank Bergen, with my wife, a 26-year resident of the Tancaverty Valley, where we look almost exclusively directly west. I know I'm not pointing that way, and have no connection to speak of with the northwest that you want to lock us into. I have spoken to this Commission and to the procedure many times about the absolute necessity of finding as many competitive districts, congressional and legislative, as is possible. Very difficult job, practically an impossible job, but it's one that you've got to undertake. I would like to speak right now to something which I think is a very surprising and stunning admission. The man who appointed Commissioner Mail, Speaker of the House Rusty Bowers, has told the Commission just on Thursday that he deplores the notion of having more competitive districts. They make his job more difficult. Well, damn it, his job is supposed to be difficult, and it is not supposed to be warped by the system that we are working with. Thanks.
I will be reading the next 10 speakers. Line up accordingly behind me. Joanne Alexander, Betty Harris, Pamela Anderson, Robert Meyer, Tim Faulkner, Matt Perilli, James Zubat, and Betty Hidalgo. The 70th Speaker is Joanne Alexander.
Hi, I'm Joanne Alexander. I live in the foothills, and I love the desert southwest outdoor life. I became an Arizona permanent resident and voter in 2016 and have been engaged in volunteer work and community life ever since, including helping people register to vote. I thank you for your hard work in the challenging task of drawing legislative and congressional districts. Arizonans passed a constitutional amendment in November 2000 to ensure that districts were drawn fairly. The six criteria you Commission members must honor are sometimes competing. However, nowhere in the amendment are you directed to establish safe districts for one party or another. This is gerrymandering, exactly what Proposition 106 was meant to curtail. I see the currently mapped Legislative District 17 as not competitive, not compact, and not honoring communities of interest. District 17 was explicitly drawn to create a safe district for Republicans. Artificially drawn safe districts threaten the health of our democracy. Young people see no point in voting or keeping up on issues when the election outcome is a foregone conclusion. Independents wash their hands of civic engagement and vote in fewer numbers. Finally, candidates running in safe districts do not have to speak to the entire electorate. They can win primaries having appealed to a narrow field of voters. When in office, they often do not represent their wider constituencies and may not be the bipartisan problem solvers our democracy needs. Done. Thank you.
My name's Betty Harris. Thank you, Commissioners, for listening to our opinions today. I've lived in a community southwest of Tucson for almost 50 years. While folks here live outside the city and west of the Tucson mountains, I think you can say we mostly workshop and socialize in Tucson. At least the constant streams of traffic on West Aho Way, Valencia, and Irvington Roads would indicate that. My community is diverse in ethnicity, background, and interest. Besides our ties to the city, I think we have a common will to get along with one another. I'm concerned that the current draft map 10 strips part of our community and places people in LD 16 and LD 23 rather than with the rest of us in LD 20. Map 9.0 does not do so. It keeps Tucson Estates and Star Valley in LD 20. It also creates a more balanced and reasonable LD 17, but that's an issue affecting other people, my friends on the northwest side. Interestingly, map 9 does, makes LD 20 a bit more competitive, which I think leads to a more active and politically involved populace. Also, I support map LD 0055. Thank you.
My name is Robert Mayer. Ladies and gentlemen of the Commission, I live in unincorporated Pima County, north of Tucson, in an area called the Catalina Foothills. If I were to draw a Legislative District map containing the foothills, the boundaries would be the Rito River on the south, the I-10 Corridor on the west, the Rimkan Mountains on the east, and the Catalina Mountains on the north. Now, it happens that that description closely corresponds to District 17 in map version 9.0, which should be no surprise because a good district map should reflect the intuition of its residents. So, in map 9.0, I live in District 17. But in map 10.0, I would live in District 18, a district which is less compact and less respectful of significant boundaries around Tucson. The new District 17 in map 10.0 obviously raises a lot of concerns. You've heard about them, and I share those. In map 9.0, I live in District 17, which is highly competitive, but in map 10.0, the new districts, 18 and 17, become safe Democratic and Republican districts. I don't want to live in a safe district if it can be helped, and it can be helped by returning to map version 9.0. Map 9.0 is superior to map 10.0, measures the compactness, number of cut boundaries, as well as competitiveness. I pray, I pray that you reconsider map 9.0. Thank you.
Hi there. My name's Tim Faulkner, and my wife and I live in the Sonoyta Elgin area. For the past 10 years, our area has been poorly represented by having been placed in the current Legislative District 2 and Congressional District 3. By placing the Sonoyta Elgin area in the district LD 19 and the, in Congressional District 6, maps will assure residents better representation. A few points to consider: most business shopping of residents in the Sonoyta Elgin area is done in Cochise County. Second, having the wine regions of Wilcox and Sonoyta Elgin in the same CD and LD would be very beneficial. The Sonoyta Elgin area has little in common with Nogales, and are separated by a large mountain range, making it disconnected from the current proposed CD 7 map. Please change the proposed CD 6 map to include the Sonoyta Elgin area, which will place Sonoyta Elgin being represented both by LD 19 and CD 6 in Cochise County, making it really nice packaging. Thank you very much.
I've asked for a little stretch on time. I'd like to, being a trooper myself for many years, I'd like to call out to two of your troopers, Valerie Newman, who's up on the other end of this thing, and Alex Pena from Community Outreach. Outstanding people, very responsive, very friendly. I've got Valerie on my speed dial list now. All right. Matt Perilli, Sonoyta Elgin, we have sent you two community plans, CD 0052 and LD 0029. I've asked my map friend to put 29 up there. Both of these, identical boundaries, that's what we want, and they extend in, they extend those districts into the eastern fringe of Santa Cruz County. This is nothing new. Going back to 1982, for 20 out of the 40 years, we have voted with Cochise, Graham, Greenlee, etc. I got a briefing from Dr. Hanley in August. She was concerned about block voting analysis. I'll give you, I've left you copies of an expanded piece of this. Please read it. But our CD Plan 5.2, them vote 62%. LD Plan 29, them vote 59%. We're not trying to rob anybody of anything. Just in Santa Cruz County, State Secretary of State, 2020 election, Democrat registered 15122, Republican 5090, a 297% majority. Case closed.
Hi, my name is Jim Zulo, and I'm interested mainly in Arizona proposed District 18. I live close to the middle of that, and I think I'm a resident of the largest population precinct in that proposed district. Well, I'm also active in our neighborhood men's group. Now, my wife calls it a men's gossip group, but we say we solve world problems. But the problem that has come up, and by the way, I drew the short stick to talk here today for our group, many in our community are concerned. We don't shop in Morana. We don't shop in Vale. We have friends in both places, but really, those are not our community of interest. In fact, they're far from it. We went to the first, my wife and I went to the Vale Shopping Center for the first time here two weeks ago. Anyway, that's all I have to say, but I do appreciate your work. I know you're volunteers, and you must have the courage to... to do what is right, even when it means contrary to your own interests. Thank you very much.
Hi, Bets Putnam-Hidalgo here. Thank you all for volunteering for this job. Did you all volunteer for the same job? The IRC was created to avoid partisan gerrymandering. Some of you do not seem to be committed to that goal. Leach, Senator Leach, and Mel completely undermined the point of the IRC with the debacle of introducing map number 10. The so-called independent head of the Commission pushed that map to the front of the line over hundreds of citizen maps that had to follow five criteria. The GOP Mel map followed none of those criteria, destroying communities of interest in order to create safe Republican districts in ways that have been outlined here by others who are more articulate than I. How did this map jump the line? Why were all of the other maps determined to be inferior when many of them actually followed the constitutional criteria that map 10 flouted in the interest of adding to Leach's constituency? Was it possible to actually follow the directions and come out with something that was not gerrymandered? Well, yes. Map LD 0055 fulfills the criteria and solves the bulk of the problems presented here. Will it get a fair hearing? Hard to believe it will after the fiasco so far. Map number 10 must be removed from consideration. David Mel must be removed from the Commission because he has lied and manipulated the redistricting process. Finally, through independent must be placed in the leadership role of this Commission. Thank you.
The next 10 speakers line up behind me accordingly. Catalina Hall, Shirley Muni, Kate Stratford, Kathy Kimbrill, Cristo Emery, Steve Ware, Judy Brownin, Bruce Burke, Melanie Burke, Marlene Bertle, Catalina.
My name is Catalina Hall. At this late date, I don't know if there's anything I could say that would make you all change map 10. Number one, map 10 is unfair and makes non-competitive districts, but it runs the risk of notwithstanding judicial scrutiny. A political party and a business club are not communities of interest. From the paper on October 27th, the Republican Southern Arizona Leadership Council knows that there is more at play than just a community of interest. The interest is political. Number two, map 10 is not compact and puts Picture Rocks and Ava Valley in a huge district that includes Pinale and Maricopa Counties. What you don't know is if you overlay a proposed freeway, I-11, it is obvious that Picture Rocks and Ava Valley would be a minority, and I-11 would be built through sensitive and clear and beautiful desert. Pima County conservationists oppose I-11, but we would be cut off from Pima County, our own county. Let your commission be remembered as the one that drew fair and legal maps and protected real communities of interest.
I'm Shirley Muni, and I've been doing mostly nonpartisan work since I moved here over 20 years ago. And I'm here to speak about Legislative District 17. This district would be the very definition of the word "gerrymandered." As has been described in the press, it carefully skirts the city of Tucson and includes two mountain ranges. Most importantly, it violates the constitutional requirements, not guidelines, requirements, that districts be compact and contiguous. Not only that, but if the Commission is considering communities of interest, what do the residents of, say, relatively urban Oro Valley have in common with those in the rural area of southeastern part of the district, other than not wanting to be considered part of Tucson? As to the constitutionally required consideration of fair and competitive districts, this certainly does not provide one. The only reason I can see for the proposed District 17 is a purely political one, designed to create yet another safe Republican district by avoiding the taint of a majority Democratic one in the city of Tucson. This reasoning is forbidden to the Commission, which is not supposed to consider partisan political registration. Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Kat Stratford. I'm a disabled, single mother of two. I've lived in Tucson for 20 years. I want to say thank you to our interpreters for making this much more accessible to me. I'm here today with my 12-year-old son Eric, who is many things, including deserving of ice cream after this, but is also trans. And I brought him here today to see this process because 10 years from now, he will have participated, hopefully, in at least one election. And that's why this process is so important to us. The reason that I'm speaking today is because when I explained this process, I told them, one side is really happy with the map that's been drawn lately, and the other side is really unhappy with the map. And their immediate response was, "Well, that's not fair. That seems like it benefits one side much more than the other." And I said, "That's correct. It does. That's not fair. It's a thing called gerrymandering." I'm repeating a lot of what's been said here today. The thing that was harder to explain was a lot of the coded language that we've heard here today. When people say that they want the suburbs to say suburbs, when people say that Tucson is different than the rest of Pima County, what they're saying is they don't want diversity. It's coded language. We know exactly what you mean. It's gerrymandering, and it has to stop. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Bruce Burke. I'm a retired lawyer, former local school board member here in Tucson, and I live in the San Clemente neighborhood, which is at the intersection of Broadway and Alvernon, just east of Reed Park in central Tucson. We support our neighborhood public school from there. We have a quite active neighborhood association, and we currently reside in Legislative District 10. I also have some experience and know this community because I've served on two reapportionment committees for the city of Tucson, who occasionally realigns their wards. Of course, our state constitution requires you to map districts that are for the benefit of voters and the communities of interest that they are composed of. Legislative map 10 has brought me to this meeting because it places my community and others along the Broadway corridor into Legislative District 21, which is a very rural district, unlike the urban areas in which we reside. Our neighborhood, our community of interest, is better served in a wholly urban district. That would bring me to, having looked at all the maps, map 9, which is compact, competitive, and a more intuitive division of our city. On that map, our legislative district, our community would be in District 18, similar to others. Thank you very much.
There's short stuff here. Hi, I'm Marlene Bertle, and I live in the foothills of Tucson. This is a little bit too close. Thank you first for all of the work that you have done this year. I've been following your progress since early this year. However, I must inform you, as so many others have today, that your work is not done. We have many problems with the map that you have put forward as the final draft map, 10.0. We have a problem with District 17 because of the wide separation between the two areas, and we agree with many of the speakers today. We also are concerned, and I say "we" talking about my husband and I, we're very concerned about the lack of competitiveness. Certainly with 17, the lack of competitiveness is very obvious. However, the lack of compactness and not being contiguous, and it's so obviously gerrymandered. And the rest of the state has a huge number of very safe districts, and we strongly encourage competitiveness. Thank you.
The next speakers, Lynn Hudson, Ira Sandershaw, Jean Fist, Lucy Messing, Tom Perlowski, Roy Davis, or Ray Davis, Ben Burkhardt, Golda Belez, Kevin Uberg, LaVoy, or Leroy Hurley, Kathy Duran. Lynn?
Hello, my name is Lynn Hudson. I'm a resident of Pima County. I hope I don't lose too much of my time in saying, "I applaud you. You knew what you were getting into, and you did it anyway," which is, I applaud your courage, I applaud your commitment, and I applaud your persistence, because here you are again, Ms. Uberg. I'm going to stop, I'm going to eliminate a lot of what I said because it's already been said, and that refers to LD 17. You're not going to please everybody. You knew that when you started. But there are some issues you need to address first, and those are the areas where you violated the law. Start with those. Okay? Now, I'm a social scientist, so I'm going to not talk about, I'm going to talk about process this time, because you've got a lot to do. So, just take this as a suggestion. You're going to do what you're going to do. Okay? The good news for you is that the process isn't over. You have a chance to reboot. And if you're going to reboot at this point, and you start that next week, and I wish you will, it won't be successful unless three conditions are met. Wow. Really? That is? Because I said thank you.
Hi, my name is Priya Sinwar. I was born and raised in the Catalina Foothills. My parents worked at the university, and I now teach at the law school. My greatest concern with the legislative draft maps is how minority voting power seems to be diluted in southern Arizona. I know the Commission is working very hard to meet its mandates, difficult job, but I worry that these maps will open you up to some decent challenges in court over the constitutional criteria and the Voting Rights Act. The fact that the urban Tucson districts of LD 18 and 20 in this map have both high minority concentrations and are relatively overpopulated compared to LD 17, which is underpopulated just above it, provides some good evidence that minority voting power might be diluted by packing minorities into these few districts. Deviation from average population should only be used to protect minority voters, not to disenfranchise them. And the greater Tucson area itself is split between more than five legislative districts, again, diluting voting power relative to existing maps. And this, again, could be evidence of cracking urban areas with higher minority concentrations. My time is almost up, so I'll conclude by saying that, please promote the voting power of minority voters as intended by the VRA, rather than packing or cracking us. Rebalance the southern Arizona districts by including Casas Adobis and other regions into that LD 17. Adjust accordingly. Thanks.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Jean Fisher, a resident of Catalina Foothills, about 1.5 miles from Brandy Fenton Park, the friendliest and most popular community park in Pima County. It is widely visited weekly and daily by foothill residents and residents of east and central Tucson. I'm going to be limiting my remarks to the LD 17 map, which I think is 10.0. I have opposed the draft LD 17 map in previous statements because it fails to meet the IRC goals of compactness, contiguousness, competitiveness, and political impartiality. These failings run counter to the purpose of AIRC. I understand there is interest in ensuring some accountability in the Tucson area for right-of-center folks, considered by some to be a community of interest, and not to be neglected. Carving out a district based on voter ideology under the false guise of community interest is the same as creating a safe seat for a certain political party. Partisan gerrymandering is one thing. Configuring a non-competitive district is quite another. The LD 17 map allows a party empowered to expand its majority. That's not the purpose of AIRC. As an alternative, I urge the Commission to reconsider the map 9.0 submitted by Commissioner Werner. I want to thank you for your courtesies. I also want to give a shout out to your staff who's been very, very helpful to me whenever I go on your website and just now to confirm I was to speak. Thank you.
Good day. My name is Lucy Messing, and I'm a retired educator, and I live in the Tankoverde Valley. I want to thank the Commissioners for your work. It's not an easy job. I appreciate the opportunity to express myself. I am here to voice my concern about the proposed LD 17 map 10.0. Voters approved an independent redistricting commission for the purpose to remove politicians from the process of drawing their own political boundaries. However, in its current form, LD 17 violates the constitutional requirements and Voting Rights Act for drawing maps. This proposed district is not compact and contiguous, as you have heard. It is made up of areas at opposite ends of the Tucson area, separated by 45-minute drive. District 17 also fails to respect communities of interest. Such deliberate attempts to gerrymander this district erodes the credibility of the IRC. Voters expect for the Commission to honor the requirements set forth to make maps fair and competitive. The integrity of the Commission is at stake. Please reconsider LD 17 map and redraw its boundaries. Thank you for your consideration of this.
Thank you. My name is Tom Przelski. I am a former member of the Arizona State Legislature. This would be the third time I have been involved in a redistricting process. I appreciate the difficulty, the job you guys are doing. I have worked as a planner. I've worked with GIS, so I understand how difficult it is to factor in these sort of things. But my concern is that you've made your jobs harder. The number 10 proposal that folks have been talking about does seem to violate the basic principles that were voted for when this constitutional amendment was passed. And when you, gerrymandering is not just about the geography of the district. It's about the intent. And there is documentation that suggests that a political party, a legislator, and a pressure group in Tucson were involved in trying to draw a partisan district, and that was their stated purpose. And so unless you want to extend your work for another few months while this is battled over in court in complicated legal proceedings, I suggest you try one of the other options. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question. I'm going to ask the same question I asked earlier as somebody in the middle. As somebody in the middle, I’m curious, ought I to be rejecting all explicit partisan maps that are offered to me, regardless of where it came? So for example, listening to the majority and minority leaders yesterday who gave suggestions, they’re partisans, they’re speaking on behalf of their parties. Should I discard, you mentioned Commissioner Lerner’s map. She explicitly was appointed because she’s a Democrat. Should I disregard that map? So I’m confused about what maps are partisan and what maps aren’t. I understand, can I finish? I understand where all maps are coming from, and we five commissioners will evaluate everything on the merit of the case. With that, thank you very much. We’re keeping our eyes on it. Please, okay, yes, you’re right, I’m sorry.
Okay. I would argue that when you had a representative from the Southern Arizona Leadership Council come to you and say, “We need to have a Republican district,” that is a partisan argument. That is much different than arguing that we need to have certain constituencies represented or something along those lines. There was an explicitly partisan argument that’s made. I would argue that if a member of the legislature says he wants a district drawn that benefits him, that is an explicitly partisan gerrymandering argument, and that’s the test, in my mind.
All right. Benjamin Brookhart, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, members of, distinguished members of the commission. I just want to thank you for being here and giving us all a chance to say our piece. My name is Benjamin Brookhart. I live in Picture Rocks, that’s Precinct 70, and I have a Tucson address, but I live outside the city limits, and I’m west of the freeway, and I’m completely separated from Casas Adobis, Morana, and Oral Valley, which is my core area, that’s my lifeline, and I’m being completely separated politically from that and socially, and it’s where I worship, it’s where I do all my activities. So communities of like interest is very important to me. And I just kind of want to put it in this way. You see that there are two battles going on. One is political, where there are bitter differences, polarized. The other is the battle between the rural and suburban from that of the city. Because what’s happening is the city acts like a sponge, and it goes all the way out into the county, and it takes from the rural, and it absorbs it, and it does nothing for the rest of the county out in the rural areas. So I want you to consider this. Be in my shoes. Would you want your resources protected? Wouldn’t you want your values to be elevated? Wouldn’t you want your needs to be met and voiced? That’s what’s the problem. We’re not getting that. That’s why we need representation in the rural areas. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Golda Velez. I’m a Tucson native. I’m here to represent the Tucson Raging Grannies. Some of them couldn’t come in because they didn’t want to be in an enclosed room. And we don’t have time, I’m really sorry, to mince words. We grannies have been around the block a few times, and we know a gerrymander when we see one. This map was drawn by Anna Clark, a vice chair of the Pima County Republican Party at the behest of Senator Leach, in an illegal attempt to keep his seat in the state legislature, an action that’s prohibited by the Arizona Constitution. We also know the SALIC represents the interests of business owners, not our kids, grandkids, or working people. David Mau, you’re a Republican, a founder of the SALIC, and now an IRC commissioner. Shame on you for jumping to the front of the line over hundreds of maps drawn by members of the public. The process matters. You’ve insisted on pushing for this exercise in gerrymandering, which violates the Voting Rights Act and Arizona constitutional rules that the public’s maps all had to comply with. And shame on Anna Clark and the mayor of Morana for their collusion in this travesty. Ms. Newberg, you say you’re neutral and concerned about communities of interest, yet this map dilutes the votes of communities of interest, the Tonah O’Hem, the Yaki, and the intentional gerrymandering of District 17 to create a safe Republican district trashes the very reason the IRC was created. We think everyone has a right to fair and competitive districts, and we demand you remove this map from consideration. Thank you.
Good grief. My name’s Lavoy Hurley, and my wife and I have enjoyed nearly 20 years in the east side of the Tancaverty Valley. We’ve, that community is the not Tucson area, yes it is, I admit that. A lot of people don’t like 17. Why is that? I’ll tell you why most people don’t like 17. It’s Republican. There, I said it, all right? But what is wrong with that? The game of politics in Arizona is played in Phoenix. The question is whether or not our team gets to play in that game. For 10 years, our teams have been sidelined down here by the last commission. That district gives us a team in Phoenix regardless of which side is controlling Phoenix. That balance is critical to us here in southern Arizona. It’s also critical, something people haven’t mentioned, it takes them the power out of Phoenix. It’s concentrated there. If we can take a little bit of power out of there for us, why is that bad? I don’t get it. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I’m Kathy Duran, and as the maps are drawn, I live by Fort Lowell and Alvernon in what is to be LD 18 currently. And if you look at that, it includes the foothills, part of Oral Valley, and a little bit of Midtown. And I live in just northeast of Fort Lowell and Alvernon. I feel that our interests in Midtown won’t be well represented. I’d rather be part of LD 20, which, if you look at map CD 0073 from the Latino Coalition for Fair Redistricting, their map CD 0073, if you move the eastern-north-south boundary east to about Craycroft, I think that would be much better. I’d like a district that includes the city of Tucson, the university, and downtown, and I think that would get much more fair representation. Okay, and yeah, I feel right now my little neighborhood, well, my part of Midtown that’s included in LD 18 would get lost in the shuffle if it’s part of LD 18 as it’s currently drawn. Okay, thank you.
My name is Kay Davis. I live in the city of Tucson on the southwest side. I’m concerned about the impact of two proposed legislative districts, 16 and 17, neither of which is compact and contiguous and maintain communities of interest. The proposed LD 16 goes from Tucson Estates at its southern border up 140 miles to Buckeye in Maricopa County. And the proposed LD 17 is made of suburbs from opposite ends of the Tucson area, separated by a mountain range. Specifically, the Tucson Estates Avra Valley area, currently proposed in map LD 16, is a 15-minute drive to downtown Tucson, and residents are part of the Tucson community, certainly not Maricopa. Similarly, residents in the city of Tucson who live west of I-10 and north of Iron Hood Will Road, which is an easy bike ride to City Hall, are not a part of the proposed LD 17 map, but in a district now connected with the city of Tucson and would be represented by someone from the Phoenix suburbs. There is a way to address the constitutional provisions that both proposed maps LD 16 and 17 violate, and that is taking a look at map LD 0055. It has been submitted and meets the constitutional criteria and the Voting Rights Act, and it results in more compact districts and addresses communities of interest. Thanks so much.
We’ll take a five-minute break for our transcriptionist at this time. 41, we’ll start back up at 1:46.
I will be calling up the next 10 speakers. The next 10 speakers. Dana Allman, Ted McLeod, Eleanor Beecher, Ted Perlowski, Sarah Ramsey, Gary Olson, Merrill Livesay, Galen Patton, Daniel Coliver, Marilyn Calhoun.
Dana?
Okay, my name is Dana Allman, and I’m a Morana resident. I’m in LD 11. I’m a veteran, a retired lieutenant colonel in the Army. I have more than 23 years of active-duty service. I’m a West Point graduate of the class of 1994, a lifelong veteran advocate, and I’m asking the commission today to approve LD 17 map version 9.0. First, I appreciate the commissioner’s written commitment to apply the provisions of the Arizona Constitution in an honest, independent, impartial fashion into upholding public confidence and integrity of the redistricting process. I believe I remember that the IRC was supposed to take redistricting out of the hands of the state legislature, however, four of the five members of the commission are from the state legislature. So this membership demonstrates that this IRC is not actually independent. So my biggest issues are with this current map for LD 17 that is blatantly designed to prevent competitive districts, and competitiveness is essential to our democracy. This heavily gerrymandered draft map ensures a Republican safe district. I don’t understand that. We’re here, lawmakers are here for us and not for themselves. We are human beings, we have common interests. Like, worrying about, are we have safe drinking water, water rights? We’re concerned about safe drinking water and shortages of water, fire, affordable housing. And so I need you to reconsider that and remember that you’re here for us and not for yourself. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rod McLeod. I’ve been a registered voter, resident, and is what, now Precinct 148 in the Casas Adobis community since 1980. I’ve been active in the Democratic Party locally since 2003, from the days of Republican-dominated LD 28 to the current somewhat competitive LD 9, which has moved mainly through our efforts from a plus-three-or-four percent Democratic voter registration edge to the current plus-eight-or-nine registration. I feel we have played by the rules, done things right in the terms of encouraging voter of all parties and no-party registrations by walking door-to-door, calling and talking to our neighbors. We have little in common with the communities in the LD 17 proposal that are distant geographically, culturally, and economically, while being tied in every way for us to the city of Tucson. I had a retail business for 15 years in the city and spent much, and now I spend much of my recreational time while not heading to fishing destinations in the southern part of the state in the city limits of Tucson. The proposed changes to the CD would cause similar problems to our communities of interest, throwing us in with rural communities from Greenlee, Graham, Canal Counties, when our education, water utilities, other utilities, and economic interests are clearly tied to the community of Tucson. I observed the changing nature of suburban districts from the more rural agricultural, mining, construction, et cetera, ways of earning a living to those jobs in tourism, financial, and high-tech. These are natural evolutions of our communities, should be reflected in newly created LD and CD districts. It is unsouthern Arizona and un-American to punish folks for playing by the rules and the services of the community.
Thank you.
That is precisely what-
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Eleanor Brecker. I’m here on behalf of myself and my husband, John Jacobs, a proud U.S. Navy veteran and a proud Democrat. We live outside the city limits in northeast Tucson, and- We live outside the city limits in northeast Tucson and I'm having an identity crisis after some of the stuff I'm hearing today because there's horses right across the street from me. So am I rural or because we do 99% of our business in the city of Tucson, do I come from that festering hellhole where it's a miracle to escape alive? It's, I never realized how lucky I was to get out of there alive. Anyway, when the story broke about Vince Leach crafting this gerrymandered map, I wasn't at all surprised. What I was surprised at is that the IRC fast-tracked this map. This is supposed to be a fair and independent process that takes politicians out of the equation. Gerrymandering is a racist assault on democracy with a long racist history and there's dog whistles, there's dogs responding all over the place right now. Please reinstate map nine, get rid of map 10, and let this be your legacy of a fair process.
My name's Ted Prozelski and I want to start by saying I served on two redistricting committees for the city of Tucson, so I understand how difficult the work that you're doing is. I live in midtown Tucson, I live in the Palaverdy neighborhood, and we are, kind of have a lot of interest with neighborhoods like Dulin-Fruitvale, Blendman Elm, because, you know, the same, same high schools, same everything, and I think that map nine has a lot of respect for that, that arrangement. Map 10, I think that the attempt to draw District 17 for whatever motives there are really ended up making a lot of the midtown districts make a lot less sense, made you put Randolph Park in with Nogales, for example. So, and I do want to talk a little bit about competitiveness. That was the whole reason for this whole exercise back when we voted for this on the ballot, and I'd like to point out to folks who are kind of poo-pooing that notion that when you make District 17 that one-sided, you're also making the districts within Tucson one-sided, and district areas that have been voting going both ways for legislative districts will now no longer do that. So, thank you.
My name is Gary Olson. I live in the Old Fouralo neighborhood of Tucson since I moved to Arizona in 1991 and worked for the TO Nation for 20 years. Our family supports LD map 10.0 and CD map 0063. We have had two assaults of women at gunpoint in our past month in our homeowners association. Never, and when I say never, I mean never, have we ever had an assault on our safety as we recently have had. The Tucson Police Department, working with our neighborhood watch program, has been responsive, but they are hampered by city council budget restrictions and policies set in place by the city council has impacted our safety. Did you know our city council is elected not by ward-specific voting as they should be, but by city-wide voting? An old Jim Crow way of controlling things. We have little representation locally and we have lost the safety we once had. Please give us fair representation in our Capitol and in Washington, D.C., and approve legislative map 10.0 and congressional map 0063. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and Committee members, for your hard work that will determine our representation for the next 10 years.
Hello, my name is Gailon Payton and I'm a resident of southern Arizona since 1970. I'm a retired teacher and now I'm a realtor. I would like to advocate the map number 10. Suburbia, outside of Tucson, the people that live in suburbia are there for a reason. They do not want to be a part of the city of Tucson. The city of Tucson doesn't really want them as well. They vote similarly, but they have similar jobs. Many of them work for the military, many of them work for the Border Patrol, Sheriff's Office, the mines. They have common interests. I heard those, it sounds like you need a wagon train. Oh, District 17 is so long and, oh, possibly. I drove from my house Broadway and Houghton today. It took me 21 minutes to go to Oracle and Ina Road. 21 minutes. So I didn't need a transport to fly me over there. We have similar interests. We're suburbanites for a reason. I went, I went to Saguaro High School, I went to the U of A, I taught for 28 years. I taught on the Thawne-Atham Reservation for 11 years. I taught at Suburban-Sabino High School. I taught in the middle school of Dulin for a couple of years, center of town. We want to be represented, excuse me.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dan Culver. I represent Saddle Brook Ranch Republican Club and the Saddle Brook Republican Club as president of each. We have over 600 paid members and we represent approximately 10% of the registered voters of the Republican Party at Saddle Brook Ranch, Saddle Brook, and Eagle Crest. I'm here to compliment you on the job you've done in listening to the people who have attended previous meetings and sent in comments for the legislative districts. We know your job is difficult and we think you've done a reasonable and practical job. We would change the little things here, and before I'm through, I'll make a couple of suggestions, but basically LD 17 and CD 6 as drawn are reasonable approximations for the community to consider, and we endorse them. On LD 17, we would ask that perhaps you include Oracle, because a number of children that go to Eagle Crest go to school in Oracle, and they're only a couple of miles up the road, and certainly we do a lot of time and a lot of business up in Oracle with the restaurants, as you've listened to the fact that we've also done business. On CD 6, I want to quickly say that we know there's been a request from the northeastern part. We used to be in CD 1, we want to be in CD 6. We have nothing to do with the northeastern. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Calhoun. I live on Dove Mountain in Morana, and I have been in Tucson for 20 years. I'm a retired teacher. When I moved here 20 years ago, the new districts had just been designed. I was LD 26. I was very active in the Arizona Education Association, including the executive board, and I was the envy of the board because we had a competitive district that was Morana, Oral Valley, and northwest Tucson. We had Republican representatives and we had Democratic representatives. That's what I'm asking for again. Map number 10 doesn't do that. It's not contiguous. It was promoted by Senator Leach, who won't even meet with me when I go to the legislature. We are separated by mountains with Tancaverdy and Vale, who have more in common with eastern I would encourage you to adopt the map of Commissioner Lerner and also .55, version .55. It's highly competitive, but it was rejected on the grounds that, oh, it's going to be a Republican district. And it truly needs to be competitive. As the speaker from the League of Women Voters said, "The idea is not to have safe R and safety districts. We need to have competitive districts wherever possible." Thank you.
My name is Merrill Livesay. I live in beautiful Picture Rocks, and I'm wearing green today, but I'm not a member of the Green Party. I support legislative district map 10.0. It comes closest to fairly representing community of interest for Picture Rocks and other areas outside of Tucson. LD 16 is rather big, but most of the area is rural and has the same interests as people in Picture Rocks and Abra Valley. What I don't understand is why it goes into the corner of Grant, and I tend to include part of the urban area of Tucson. As far as congressional maps, I support CD 0061, which puts Picture Rocks, Green Valley, Quail Creek into CD 6 where they belong. Also mapped, CD 003 is good, but it leaves Picture Rocks trapped in CD 7. We don't want to be in CD 7 with the city of Tucson. We'd much rather be in CD 6. There's not a shared community of interest between the city of Tucson and Picture Rocks. I agree with the city of Tucson mayor, who wants Tucson in CD 7. I agree that Mayor Romero and map CD 0061 and CD 0063 do just that. And I'd like to say, if you're going to be required to have majority-minority districts, then you're not, you're not going to have as many competitive districts. It's just the way it is, so it's not a big flaw on any of your part. Thank you.
I feel like Vanna White up here. That was our 100th speaker. We should be giving an award there.
Our next 10 speakers, Melissa Westbrook, Garrett Abeline, Darren Venters, Judith Keegan, Tom Murphy, Cheryl Lynn Young, James Spiegel, Tiara Yamakura, Brad Barber. I'm sorry. Okay, if you'll line up behind me as I called your name. Melissa? Melissa Westbrook. No, Melissa Westbrook. Garrett?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Chairwoman, I also wore red today because I did not get the memo on color coding before coming. So I wanted to speak about LD 17, which I would live in under these proposed maps. I live at Broadway and Houghton on the east side of Tucson. And rather than speak to things that have been said earlier, I wanted to kind of talk to your question, chairwoman, about getting feedback from partisan actors. And my thought is that you have to hold feedback from partisan actors to a much higher level of scrutiny, because there, it's in their interest, right, I'm sure you've thought about this, it's in their interest to protect their seats and to grow the seats of their party. And I listened to your previous sessions, your deliberations and how you came to this map, and you wanted to carve out a Republican area in Pima County so they could have a voice, and I understand that. But to me, that is, that's an overly partisan concern, and if you could do that easily, then that's great, but it's a weird shape, and Mount Lemon in the middle of it has 200 people living on it, and that cuts it off from being a contiguous district. So I hope you'll consider more compactness and competitiveness measures. Thank you.
Thank you. I am Darren Venters, and I live in that portion of LD 19 that is in Sarita, per the version 10 map. The larger part of Sarita, where we shop, see doctors, and so on, is in LD 21. Please move the town of Sarita into LD 21, excuse me, into LD 19, so that we can have a common area there. I adamantly support the proposed map CD 0063. It moves the communities of Green Valley, Quail Creek, and Sarita into CD 6. Sarita is made up of retirement communities, commuter families that work at Davis-Monithan, Raytheon, Border Patrol, Sheriff's Department, so on. We have historically been associated with more conservative, the eastern part of Arizona. We have nothing in common with western Arizona, Tucson, Yuma, Nogales, and the reservations. CD, excuse me, CD 0063 places Davis-Monithan into CD 6, where it will share the same interests that Fort Wachuka has. We're currently being placed in a CD that will not represent our interests. If we remain in CD 7, our need will be ignored. The line between CD 6 and CD 7 should be drawn to the west side of Green Valley and Sarita from Pima Mine Road south to the Santa Cruz County line. Tucson and south Tucson should be part of CD 6. It can compete with Yuma, Yuma County, Maricopa County, and so on. Green Valley, Quail Creek, and Sarita should be part of the CD 6. Thank you very much.
My name is Judith Caggy. I'm a resident of Cassas Adobus. My community of interest includes neighbors in Oral Valley, Morana, and the Catalina foothills, along with the northwest part of Tucson proper. My interactions on a daily basis are driven by where my local schools are, where I shop, recreate, and worship. The proposed District 17 excludes much of my local community of interests and is not compact and contiguous to the extent practicable. These draft maps, version 10, split my local amphitheater school district into three different legislative districts. LD 17 is made up of left-leaning opposites of the Tucson area that are separated by a mountain range and a very long drive. Those of us in my area have little to no interaction with communities on the opposite side of town. This district has great potential to be a competitive district, but it has been gerrymandered, and that's a problem. I'm disheartened that the commission seems intent on creating safe districts over all the other considerations that should be part of the criteria. The best way to represent right-leaning voters in left-leaning areas, or left-leaning voters in right-leaning areas, is to give them competitive districts where their voices might actually be heard. When we make districts safe, we guarantee our elected officials speak only to their base and never to the broad electorate. Thank you.
Cheryl Lynn Young, 35-year resident of Tancaverdy Valley. Commenting on competitiveness, just because a community of interest happens to vote either Democrat or Republican does not mean that giving that community representation indicates partisanship. I'm here to speak in support of LD draft map 10. Since the last redistricting, my LD 10 has included the eastern outskirts of Tucson and a large swath of the city. Unfortunately, this has resulted in almost no representation for the outskirts, and any consideration of our interests have been totally subjugated to the urban interests of the city of Tucson. We are very happy with the proposed LD 17, which, even though large, forms a more cohesive community of rural, suburban, and small-town interests. I would also like to address CD draft map 7.1. A map CD 0063 has been submitted, making some changes, and this map has a lot of support in southern Arizona. This map moves areas of the city now in proposed CD 6 to proposed CD 7, which results in the city of Tucson being together in one congressional district and having their community of interest served by being together. In fact, Tucson Mayor Regina Romero has made statements indicating she would like the city of Tucson to be together in one CD. This move would then allow CD 6 to pick up Green Valley, Quail Creek, and Sarita. Thank you.
My name is James Spiegel. My wife, Bobby, and I are retired, live in Saddle Brook Ranch at the north-central end of the proposed CD 6 map. We moved to Arizona six years ago for a more rural, quiet, and still active lifestyle with relative ease at getting to outlying suburban communities for shopping services as well as cultural, restaurants and the culture that they provide. We support LD 17 10.0, and most of what you have in CD 6, but we have a concern about CD 6. It's a large, mostly rural district with suburban areas and small towns. It includes a good portion of the city of Tucson, unfortunately. The city of Tucson is a densely populated urban area that is totally different, has a totally different lifestyle and communities of interest than the rest of the proposed CD 6 map. Having a large portion of the city of Tucson in it immediately creates a division between the rural and urban communities with different lifestyles, interests, needs, and issues. Economies and systems that support them are completely different, and it will create only conflict of interest. and it will create only conflict of interest. I ask you to get creative, to include a more consistent constituency, and take the city of Tucson out of the proposed CD 6 map. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Sierra Yamanaka, and I am a lifelong Tucsonan who's been very active in organizing our community. As a graduate student in human rights at the University of Arizona, I care deeply about the work that government does on behalf of its citizens. I am concerned about the decisions being made in Congressional District 6 on this proposed map. Having worked in Casa Grande, Tucson, and throughout Cochise County, I don't believe that Casa Grande belongs in the same district as Tucson and that they are not communities of common interest. Casa Grande has been growing and is more akin to an excerpt of Phoenix than to Tucson. Tucson and its diverse interests deserve to be fairly represented in Congress, and more of the city should be included in CD 6. Additionally, I am concerned about the proposed LD 17, which would be divided by the Catalina Mountains, one of Tucson's most notable landmarks. I would like to see a map that allows for the best representation possible, and having a district drawn like this does not make that allowance. Districts should be drawn so that they can be driven through, hence compact and contiguous. I want to acknowledge that redistricting is difficult work, and I appreciate the opportunity to share my comments with you. I hope you will take what the public has to say very seriously as you make your final decisions and that you will act in the best interest of the most Arizonans possible. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank you, commissioners, for your efforts and your work on this. We're all pretty passionate, but by now I imagine it's getting pretty old. My name is Brad Barber. I'm a 55-year resident of Pima County. I live in Casas Adobis, which is now in your draft LD 17 map. I am deeply concerned about the draft map for LD 17. I think it's an egregious example of gerrymandering. The map only looks contiguous. Basically, what it does is it uses a gigantic part of the national forest to glue together two disparate communities, one in northwest Tucson and the other in southwest Tucson. The people who live in these areas, northwest Tucson and southwest Tucson, do not go to the same churches. They don't shop in the same areas. They don't send their kids to the same school district. They are not really part of the same community. I think this problem could be solved by reconsidering the District 17 and going back to the map that was basically 9.0. Thank you.
The next speakers, Angie Anderson, James Mays, Charlotte Ortiz, Dan Roski, Christopher D. Young, Shannon Leonard, Matt Koper, Nathan Davis, Lou Sampson, Judith Alkry. Angie?
Hi, my name is Angie Anderson, and I want to thank Chairwoman Newberg for being steadfast. I live in Green Valley, and I support the 10.0 draft LD map to maximize my communities of interest and my voice in Phoenix. I am a not-Tucson voter. For the last 10 years, Green Valley was not heard in Phoenix. I request balance. LD 19 supports our shared communities of interest. Parts of Green Valley are now in CD 7 with Tucson, Yuma, and Native American reservations, communities with which we have little in common. CD 6 with Cochise County is where we belong and not Tucson, Yuma, and the Native American reservation. Our needs are much different than those in CD 7. Green Valley is a retirement community. A large number of Border Patrol, law enforcement, and military, both active and retired, reside in Green Valley-Sarita. Destroying these communities by denying them representation in government would be disastrous. Thank you.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank Erica Newberg for your unwavering commitment to attend the IRC hearings. I would also like to thank the commissioners for your commitment to these hearings. My name is Annie Ovitz, and I live in Green Valley. The 10.0 version legislative map represents my community of interest. I would like to see this map be the final map. CD 6 is where Green Valley and Sarita should be together. You currently have a portion of Green Valley in CD 7. It will keep urban and shared communities of interest together. Tucson is separate from the urban areas, and the mayor understands that, and she doesn't want Tucson in CD 6. That would make absolutely no sense. That is why we are all here, to make perfect sense of all of this. Let us keep Green Valley and Sarita together with our community of interest. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name's Dan Roski. I'd first like to express appreciation to the commissioners for what is largely a thankless job. Thank you, and everybody who's participating and enabling this. I've lived in Tucson for 36 years. I've grown up here, went to the U of A, went to Pima College, graduated in engineering physics. And I currently live on the northeast side of town in the Tancaverty Valley. I've come to express concerns about LD 17. In the engineering world, we set up to manage complex engineering projects. We set up figures of metric and guidelines, much like what we have in the Constitution. We have six guidelines in the Constitution that tell us what we are supposed to pay attention to in drawing these maps. One guideline that has been mentioned over and over is competitiveness. That's only one guideline, and it's not the most important one. Nevertheless, LD 17 fails to meet four of these six guidelines in any objective way. When you fail to meet 66% of your guidelines, that should set off a red light. If there was no other way to meet the requirements here than the map currently drawn, I would have no problem. But there are other maps. They've been stated, 9.0, for example. However, there should be a red light going on right now, as one is about to go on right now, that tell you something is wrong here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lou Sampson, and I've lived in Green Valley for over 30 years. It is an unincorporated area of Pima County. I have watched Sarita grow up and turn into a vibrant little town, which include many retirement communities, and we have much in common with them. The majority of us actually honor and respect our law enforcement and military. CD 6 is much more compatible for us than CD 7. Since the last redistricting, I have not had representation in my area. I urge you to please consider moving Green Valley and all of Sarita into CD 6 and putting Casa Grande into CD 7. That seems to be a more equitable exchange and at least puts more communities in common together. And PS, I'm not triggered at all by anything any of you are wearing, just to let you know.
Hi, I'm Chris DeYoung, and I've been a Tucson resident for over 40 years. And I have a letter with me also signed by and representing several of my immediate neighbors also. We are all residents who've lived in Tucson and been registered voters here for over 20 years. We live north of West Ironwood Hills Drive, which is the new southern border of LD 16. And all of us have been there for some decades. Our ties are to Tucson. We've sent children to TUSD. We've attended the University of Arizona and worked at the University of Arizona. We pay Tucson city taxes. We vote in Tucson city elections. We volunteer in Tucson. Tucson is our community. LD 16 extends from West Ironwood Hills Drive north through Casa Grande all the way to Buckeye. That's not my local community. That's much closer to Phoenix than it is to Tucson. This district is not geographically compact, and it cuts us off from Tucson. It ignores visible geographic features and Tucson city boundaries. For those reasons, we strongly object to this new district boundary. We have nothing in common with Buckeye or Casa Grande. Tucson is our community. How can someone who represents Buckeye fairly and in good faith also represent us? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shanna. Good afternoon, it's afternoon, and welcome to my home of 50 years, Tucson, Arizona. I grew up in the quiet rural Tucson mountain foothills off of Sweetwater and Community of West Day. The desert is my happy place. I have a rental real estate business in Tucson. I recently returned from central Tucson to the Tucson foothills near Painted Hills and Ironwood. I'm here to tell you, don't give the Tucson foothills a Buckeye. LD map 10, District 16, has a boundary at Ironwood Hills and I-10 and slices the Tucson mountains, putting half with Casa Grande, Maricopa, and Buckeye. My house is near the border inside the Tucson city limits, seven minutes from downtown Tucson. That's why we are the Tucson Mountains. The left ear of 17 in Red Rock is surrounded by District 16. Can you show that? My community in the Tucson Mountains is being cut up so that Red Rock can be connected to Vail. I have made a map which puts Red Rock back with Pinell and keeps the Tucson foothills with Tucson. It has two competitive districts in Pima with a spread of less than four points. It keeps communities whole. It also has two safe Republican districts in Pima County. People want Red Rock and Vail together because of lifestyle. Well, I like Oracle, but I don't think you're going to keep me from driving there. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Matt Kopeck. I currently serve on the governing board of amphitheater public schools. Let me first say, after the 2010 census, I was the chairperson of the city of Tucson's redistricting committee to redistrict awards. So I have an understanding of what you're going through now, having to comport a lot of competing interests. So thank you for your service, and I really mean it. I just wanted to bring your attention to the letters of October 25th and December 2nd we wrote requesting that the amphitheater school district remain in one legislative district if possible, and then if it has to be split up, where to do it. So I would encourage you to take a look at those and incorporate them into your final draft maps or your final map. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Nathan Davis. I'm a lifelong resident of Tucson. When I spoke a few months ago to you, I mentioned that I live in the Casas Adobis neighborhood, that my business is in Catalina Foothills, that when I was a teacher, I taught in southern Tucson. My wife teaches in south Tucson. My gun range is in Catalina, and my church is in Oro Valley. And I reiterate that just to mention, we are not islands unto ourselves with these communities. We are part of a larger southern Arizona community. And I want to really emphasize today the importance of competitiveness. Currently, under the districts, 90% of Arizona voters under draft map 10 will not have a true competitive choice in a November election. This is going to increase partisanship, despite the fact that a third of Arizonans identify as independents. Arizona voters want competitive individual districts, not just a state with a legislature that is roughly 50/50. LD 17, as it is drawn in draft map 10, is currently about as Republican as LD 18 is Democratic. The solution is simple. Create two competitive districts in Tucson, allowing both Republicans and Democrats a chance and voters a choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Judith Alkire, and I live in Green Valley, Arizona. I am in an unincorporated area of Pima County. There are many, many people who live in unincorporated areas of Pima County. Just recently, last night, I heard that Tucson is one of the cities in the United States that has very high increasing crime. In unincorporated areas, we depend on the sheriff, and we thank them, and they have served us well. I'd like to say that Green Valley and all of Green Valley and all of Sarita would very much like to be in CD 6. I think that's the place that we belong. That's the place we've been for the last 10 years. And we do appreciate the legislative District 19. I believe that that's going to finally give us a chance to vote for someone who will give, hear our voice, will talk to us about our concerns, and we will finally, after 10 years, have a voice in the United States Congress and in the state legislature of the state of Arizona. That is, if we can find qualified candidates, which we will definitely look for. And Chairman, we appreciate the fact that you have given of your time and interest to attend personally each of these listening tours. Having been here for many hours a day, this is quite a thing to thank you for. Thank you.
We have about 20 speakers left, so yay, we're getting down there. Diane Frelo. I want to say Sharon Shereen Bowman, James Hanley, Dan Hunt, Carissa Sepp, Laura Nastias, Carol Lindley, Ron Disusa, Stephen Marks, April or Ariana, Santa Anna. Diane? Good afternoon. I'm Diane Preolo, and I live in Sarita. I am involved in local politics, very much so involved in Green Valley, including with Legislative District 2. In the new maps that have been proposed, I'm very much in favor of map version 10.0. Good job. I applaud you for it. I feel like it gives me a voice, and it represents community of like interests. I am requesting, along with fellow people that have been up here, for you to put Sarita and Green Valley together. I go to Tucson when I need to go to Lowe's or Home Depot or if I want a good michelada at BK's. Otherwise, I go to Green Valley. I'm active in Green Valley. I am politically involved down there. That's where my community is, and to break up Sarita and Green Valley makes no sense. The present maps personally affect me because I would be now in District 21 with this appendage up there in Tucson. And so I'm in a retirement community. Put like with like. It's just human nature. The urban stays with the urban, and the people who are drawn to the rural and suburbia and the retirement community, like, that's where we want to be with. Those are our communities of interest. So I'm requesting you take Sarita and Green Valley and put it in CD 6. And I also agree with the mayor. Put Tucson together. Mid-Tucson needs to stay together, and yo, support the mayor.
Good afternoon. My name is James Hanley, and I live in central Tucson in the Palaverdy neighborhood. Verde neighborhood where Ted Brzezinski lives. And I'd like to point out a couple of things. First of all, this is the second independent redistricting commission that the state of Arizona has put together. The first one, we're living under the first commission, and it seems that that has resulted in having pretty well-balanced partisan power in the state legislature. If you look at the state legislature, the House has 31 Republicans and 29 Democrats. The Senate has 16 senators and 14, I mean 16 Republican senators and 14 Democrats. So it looks like that first commission did a pretty good job of creating competitive districts. So it stymies me of why you have to go to such great lengths and really radically redrawing all these districts. It seems like we'd only need to tweak it for the difference in the growth of the population. We don't see a lot of in-migration in this state where we have a lot of Democrats moving to districts and Republicans. It seems that this map 10 is gerrymandered if you just observe the color of the shirts that people are wearing who come up and vote for 10. Okay? Thank you.
First off, thank you for the work that you're doing. And I've heard from a lot of people today and throughout the process, and I hope that you're taking all the comments to heart. My name is Dan Hunt, I've lived in Tucson for over 13 years. Just wanted to talk today about the constitutionally bound objectives of the commission and how they're being disregarded in the draft map 10. The creation of this politically safe district for the party submitting the map unfairly impacts other districts. This does a great disservice to my current LD 10 district, which is now 21. I am gerrymandered into a safe district to appease almost four other safe districts. I don't agree nor do I feel I'll be heard in a district where representatives will appease the extremes and never touch base with the independents or try to represent the full community. As currently drawn, 25 of the 30 proposed legislative districts are expected to uniformly elect candidates of only one party. The commission has virtually ignored the constitutionally mandated competitiveness criteria in the adopted maps. New data shows that the vast majority of newly registered voters are registering as independents. By drawing safe districts for the two major parties, the commission does a disservice to these underrepresented independent voices. I strongly oppose draft map 10.0 and encourage you to take 9.0 as the path forward. Thank you.
I don't want to break it. So my name is Carissa Sepp. I'm here today to talk about LD, I guess now I'm going to be 21, and I'm like right on that edge where I kind of get screwed because I walk over, I'm on a new LD, and I go over to another corner, I'm on like four points, which is ironic because this is Sheraton Four Points. So just to say that, I really, really, really would like you to try to help me not have to cross four congressional or four LD districts every single day. I get my kids to school, they're in 18, they're in 20. I work and I have to cross over. I bike over four districts a day. That is, to me, how do I get representation? How do I get the right person to listen to my needs? I'd like you to really think about that and use the Pulsby Popper Test, and it's a mathematical model where you can actually zero in and then zoom out and it tells you if you're gerrymandered or not. It's all available out there, all these models are out there. I'm an engineer, so I would expect that that would be a criteria that we would use to actually say, this is good, independent of all our emotions and what we want because it's our vial and our need to feel in the community. We also have to understand, other people have thoughts that we may not have considered and that actually can make us all better. Because I'm retired or because I'm working and I have kids, doesn't mean that I can't listen to somebody who has a different life than I do. And I want them to have a voice. So I would really appreciate it. Thank you for your time, I'm going to lose it, but thank you.
All right. My name is Rhonda Souza. I'm a recent U of A graduate living here in the city of Tucson. I like to speak publicly in support of publicly submitted map LD 0051 with 0056 as a useful alternative. Now, published map LD 0051 fulfills the entire criteria required for an approved map, in addition to keeping the Pasquayaki community within the same legislative district. This map helps give proper representation to local indigenous communities. I myself have conversed with Pasquayaki students who share the same sentiment that indigenous communities should be kept together to the furthest extent possible. They do not want their representation diluted. And also, as a resident of the city of Tucson, I would like to support the CD 0063 map. It keeps communities of interest together and gives proper representation to our Latino community here in Tucson. Mayor Regina Romero said it best when she remarked how Tucson should be its own congressional district as much as possible, highlighting the unfairness of splitting up Tucson's communities of interest among arbitrary lines. Now, I'm sure others in my community would feel the same way, that we should keep Tucson in its own district and it'd be best for all of us. Thank you.
My name is Stephen Marks and I live in the Tancaverde area. I walked down the street to GUSD School, Tucson Unified School District, where children are drawn from all over to come there, Sabino High School. What I'm here to say is District 17 is clearly gerrymandered. My adult children live in Oro Valley, I live in Tancaverde, there is not a community of interest across those. I've lived both places, Tucson and Oro Valley. As a parent of four, what I tell my kids is to clean up a mess, admit when you've made a mistake, and I say that to the district directly, with no disrespect, but directly. This is a mess. George Washington warned us against partisanship. These maps provoke partisanship. They should be competitive. What the lady before me, the engineer, said is straight on. When we have competitive districts, we talk to each other, we're no longer so extreme. We've had one civil war, we don't need another. Thank you.
I'll start by finishing Lynn Hudson's comments from earlier. She said that a reboot will not be successful unless three conditions are met. One, political shenanigans must stop completely. Two, every commissioner must focus on what is best for all Arizonans. And three, heated rhetoric and recriminations cannot be allowed to sap the energy needed to complete the job. That means we all have a role to play, commissioners, staff, consultants, interested Arizonans, and party leaders. Now, my comments. Good afternoon, my name is Laura Nastacy and I am a resident of Saurita. First, I want to acknowledge your hard work. I am also a community volunteer, and I know that what we see here today is just a small part of the work you all have done and will do on behalf of the citizens of Arizona. Your job is especially vital right now as public confidence in the ethics of our elected officials and trust in our government institutions is low. It is important that your end product reflects the nonpartisan nature of what the law charged you to do here. To that end, I ask you to keep the communities long, the I-19 corridor intact as one legislative district. As a military family who lived on base at Davis-Monthan, we recognize the beauty and strength that comes from a diverse population. It's important that cultural, socioeconomic, and racial diversity is represented in the legislative districts of Arizona. Additionally, competitive districts ensure good governance. Please keep the legislative districts diverse and competitive. Say no to map 10.0. Thank you.
We are down to the last 10 speakers. Barbara Hutchinson, Mary Albert, Octavio Traheal, Stephen Valencia, Beth Horowitz, Linda Evans, Nancy Musgrave, Cynthia Wallace, and Faith Ramon. Barbara?
And thank you for allowing me to speak. My first time, so it's a bit nerve-wracking. And I really appreciate having this opportunity. My name is Barbara Hutchinson. I've lived in Pima County for 41 years and I've worked at the University of Arizona for 35 years and just recently retired. For the past few months, actually, most of this year, I've been watching this redistricting process in the hope that the current independent redistricting committee would demonstrate a model of fair and unbiased redistricting for the nation. In 2000, the voters of Arizona made it clear that they wanted politics and ideology taken out of this process. However, some of the proposed maps do not fulfill that purpose, and you've heard a lot of this today, but I'm going to reiterate. In particular, the gerrymandering of District 17 does not meet the requirements of compactness, competitiveness, and keeping communities of interest together. For example, Morana, Oro Valley, and Costasodobes have little, if anything, in common with the communities of Vail, the Houghton Corridor, and Tonka Verdi. The creation of safe districts is absolutely undemocratic and promotes extremism at the expense of healthy dialogue and equal participation. This is a divisive, this is a disservice to the citizens of Arizona and demeans the political process. I'm requesting and urging the IRC to abide by Arizona law and make the changes necessary to give Arizona nonpartisan competitive districts. Thank you so much.
I want to say good morning and good afternoon because that's how we all started. My name's Marcy Albert. I appreciate the committee, especially being here for the last 10 people who are commenting. That says something. It's been a long day for all of us, especially you. So thank you very much for the opportunity. I've lived in Tucson since 1979. I'm a retired educator and social worker, and I presently live in what is LD 10 and have appreciated living in a competitive district. The legislative seat has changed hands through both parties through the last 10 years, and I feel that has made for a more balanced representation because of that. I also feel that the district is representative of the community. By having a district that's competitive, it encourages the candidates to listen to all the members of their community because they need more than just their group to win that district office. The new map will put me in a district that's not representative of my community, nor is it geographically based or competitive. Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it, especially on a long day like today.
Hello there, commissioners. My name is Steve Valencia. I spoke when you had the meeting there at the Tucson Convention Center. And I remember having my little speech, you know, on my phone, but by the time I got up, the battery had gone down out of my, and so I had to do it all, you know, by memory, which isn't really all that good in this stage of my life. So anyway, I did want to just say a few things. I'm here speaking in support of the Arizona Latino Coalition, updates from the draft congressional map, CD 0073. The Arizona Latino Coalition's proposed map was created by identifying concentrated areas of Latino voting age population within cohesive communities of interest. The Coalition's congressional map creates two districts, CD 3 and CD 7, that perform in elections as Latino districts. They protect the strength of the Latino vote, unite communities of interest, and are also as compact as possible. And I have like 10 seconds to go, and all I got to say is thank you so much for your work, Chair Newberg, commissioners, thank you so much. Have a good day.
Hi, my name is Beth Horowitz. I live in CD 2, LD 9, and been here 25 years. And I have some questions I hope you answer, as well as some comments. And that is, when you were drawing these maps, did you guys separate out the six categories and make maps on each category and then overlay them so you can see like where condensus happens, competitiveness happens, not traveling far, like taking somebody who lives near Tucson and have them go be represented in Yuma? Did you do that? And if not, what was your process? And would you consider taking a look at that and maybe even doing AI to see what happens when you draw maps that way? And the others, did you take in consideration, looking at the maps you did draw, and do the geometric mathematical analysis to check for things like competitiveness, not having people be unrepresented because they can no longer access their representation because it doesn't represent where they shop and live and act? And so my comments are, like, I'm dismayed to learn that the executive director who was hired, that was a Republican representative, that in some ways the independent nature of the commission has been violated through partisanship, through accepting maps that have been drawn by legislator?
Hello, my name is Linda Evans, LD 9, and I think after listening to many, many comments, that the one thing that you're missing is the trend in Pima County. The trend is definitely blue. It's coming overwhelmingly from California, from Oregon State, Washington State, but Californians just love us here because the housing is cheap. So you have to think about the next five years and the next 10 years as well. And I'd like to say what I'm going to say. This is the end of the public hearings for Pima County. We look to the future, future representation from Pima County in the state legislature of Arizona. According to the Tucson mayor's State of the City speech a couple days ago, the promise is future high taxes. By 2030, we in Pima County, Maricopa County, will be too poor to own property, but we will love it. That's the promise of Agenda 2030. What we will possess is future property, so all is future poverty, so all will be equal. Our only way out in Pima County is map LD 0051, or its cleaned-up version with unbroken precincts and less gerrymandering map LD 0056, offshoots of approved map 10. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for being here. My name is Nancy Musgrave. I live in Picture Rocks, which map 10 and earlier maps show in LD 16. This is disturbing. I can find no good reason for putting Picture Rocks in a district with towns way up in Pinal and Maricopa Counties and not putting us in LD 17, a district with other Pima County towns, specifically Morana, our neighborhood borders us on the north and east. It's Morana is our closest neighbor that we have geographic and economic ties with and with whom we even share a school district. Our kids are part of the Morana Unified School District. We have absolutely no ties at all to towns way up in Pinal and Maricopa Counties. We do not belong in LD 16, we belong in LD 17. To put Picture Rocks in 16 means we would not be in a compact or contiguous district, just as bad. We'd be separated from our real community of interest and other Pima County towns, including Morana. We don't even geographically connect to the rest of LD 16. Morana is physically between Picture Rocks and Pinal County, physically separating us from the rest of LD 16. Looking at the maps, I see Vail is in 17. Again, this makes no sense since Vail and the rest of LD 17 have nothing in common and are nowhere near each other. This would not be a contiguous district either. I propose you remove Vail from 17 and put Picture Rocks in LD 17 instead where we belong. I'd also like to say, some of us do want to be in CD 7, unlike an earlier speaker. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Wallace. I live in midtown Tucson in the Peter Howell neighborhood. The current approved draft LD map 10 lacks The current approved draft LD map ten lacks competitiveness. Statewide, out of thirty districts, there are only two that are somewhat competitive and half of them are effectively strongholds of a single party. This error can be addressed in part by rethinking the districts around Tucson, which the current map ten violates, the districts which violate many of the stated redistricting criteria. In particular, proposed districts seventeen and Twenty One appear gerrymandered for reasons many today have shared. At the least, I ask you to adopt LD draft map nine. This map results in three competitive districts for the entire state. In this map, the districts around Tucson are also a better fit for the stated redistricting criteria. Finally, I wish to amplify the voice of indigenous nations and consider it vital and most important that their districts reflect them as a special community of interest. And finally, I want to thank you for your service and thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Hello, my name is Faith Ramon, thank you, I'm the last speaker. Oh, one more, I'm sorry. I wanted to say skutash, banjukke, Faith Ramon. I come from the community of Kiatoa on the Thaunautum Nation. Welcome the commission as well as everyone present to my ancestral land of Shjukshun. I'm here once again to voice my concerns with the map, especially LD seventeen, but I'm actually here to speak on behalf of the Arizona's coalition, updated draft map, map zero zero seven three. The coalition creates two districts, LD three and LD seven. They protect the strengths and the Latino voice, unites community of interest, and are also as compacted as possible. Not all Latinos live in this district, so the coalition has drawn districts around the rest of the state that serve the incorporated Latino voters in other areas in the congressional districts that are most compactive. Like in congressional district legislative two, the map uplifts the voice and the votes of the Latino and indigenous voters all over the state and that is why I support it. The Arizona's Latino Commission for Fair Distraing has support and encouragement from many individuals, elected leaders, and organizations like Lucha, RACE, Mi Familia Volta, as well as other organizations here in Tucson. We have joined the coalition's efforts to, thank you, thank you so much for your time, I appreciate you.
I have one, I have a follow-up question, excuse me, miss. So I'm going to-
Finish, yes.
I'm going to ask a question that I've asked earlier, just of different communities because out of our sensitivity to understand where our minority populations live and to empower them as much and partner different communities. How do you feel about similar interests between the Native American, the tribal communities, and the Latino communities? Do you have any particular thoughts to add along those lines as we're carving out the districts?
I do, and thank you for asking me. My nation is on the Thaunautum Nation, which is the seven, but all of the natives from the Thaunautum Nation, we come to Tucson. We come to Tucson for groceries, we only have one grocery store on our reservation. We come here for all of the services, if it's medical, if it's with our cars, even if it's to engage with other community members here in Tucson. I am not happy with this because we always go into Tucson. A lot of the majority here in Tucson is Latino and Native American community, not to mention Sanover, Pasqua, and our south side, Barrios. Not only do we just live in just the south side, Native community and Latino communities are in LD seventeen. We are all over Tucson, Arizona, and you've heard it throughout the day that Oro Valley, they do not want to be part of Tucson. I want to support that. We are a community of interest, we should be together as a community and we should have competitive, competitive majority districts because diversity equals representation.
Our final and last speaker, Paul Stapleton Smith.
Commissioners, I thank you and I apologize for even having to be here as the last one. I commend you for your work, I commend you for your service. And as my sister, Faith Ramon with Lucha, just described, in particular consideration of LD seventeen. While you've done fabulous work on many of the maps across the state, you've heard today over and over, LD seventeen represents specific challenges. It goes to not only the reputation and intent of this commission, but on the subject of competitiveness, we can do better and I suspect that this commission will do better. So thank you very much for your service, thank you to everybody who came here today and may you all remain safe and well. Thank you.
Well, on behalf of all of my fellow commissioners, I want to thank everyone who spoke today, everyone who's been patient and taken the time to give us input in these sixty-four meetings that we have, public meetings that we have held throughout the state over the last few months. We look forward to Monday morning and trying to draw real maps. So we'll see how this goes together. And at this point, we would like to adjourn the meeting and thank you all.